Welcome to all of our community members to our West Orange Board of Education virtual meeting on January 13th, 2021. Good evening to Dr. Cascone. Good evening to my fellow board members. And Ms. Flores, would you do the most please?
Sure. Mrs. Huerta?
Yeah.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Here.
Mr. Rothstein?
Here.
Vice President Tony Clough?
Here.
President Trick scales?
Here.
Are we standing?
Yeah, you normally John would say, so you can say, please stand for the pledge.
Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Flores. Just before I turn things over to Dr. Cascone, I just wanted to call attention to an addition on our agenda. We have added the board goals. And this comes as a recommendation from the New Jersey School Boards Association. And it is a suggestion that we stay focused, we keep the community focused on those items, those objectives, those goals that we're working on for the current year. So we have four board goals, and I'm certainly not going to read them, but just wanted to inform the public why you see them there, and they will be there throughout. Dr. Cascone?
Thank you, Mr. Trick scales, and good evening, everyone. I hope this finds everyone everyone well and having a good week so far. You know, as this is predominantly a policy work session, I just wanted to provide the board and the community just with a little bit of context relative to the policies which you see on on the agenda for first reading, and which will be considered by the board under Section 5 of the work agenda. So these policies you see here have all been reviewed by a member of the board. Some of these policies were not flagged or noted with any need for edits. In some cases, they might even have been facsimiles of the West Orange policies, which in the previous review of the manual, the committee at that time had asked for the West Orange policy, or portions of that policy to be included in the Strauss Esme boilerplate. And in other cases, board members in their review of the policy might have identified an aspect or a component of the policy which they felt necessitated some additional discussion. We have pulled any policies within this group of policies that the board members had flagged for further review. We've pulled those, and those will be the primary focus of conversation and work tonight, once we go into the work session. The the policies that do not fall into that category and in need of further review, and which will be discussed today, again, first reading, and the the public could could expect that those policies would appear on the January 25th agenda for a second reading and adoption. The policies flagged for further review will probably not, because typically what happens after the conversation that you'll observe later is the board will say, hey, you know, can you know, would you follow up with board counsel about that? We recommend that you share that with an administrator for review, or we make edits, and they have to go back to our our policy advisor to make and send back to us. So typically, between the point in time that the board provides feedback that needs to be figured into the revised policy, and when we put it back on an agenda for adoption, can be anywhere short in the short term, two weeks, but usually more between three and four weeks before it'll end up back on an agenda. So the second reading of the policies here that are being discussed tonight will probably not appear on an agenda until February. But I give this, I know it sounds convoluted, but I think it's important just from broad brushstrokes for the 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 public to understand the process of review and deliberation that goes into policies before they ultimately go through that second reading and adoption. That's all I have, Mr. Trix heels.
Thank you, Dr. Cascone. And looking at our agenda, we have an opportunity for board reports. So I'll just go through the list and see if board members have comments or reports. Ms. Huerta?
I always get to go first, huh?
Yes, that's one of the pleasures of being our newest board member, your first.
Well, good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us. And I look forward to a productive policy workshop, my first policy workshop. I do want to, you know, say a couple of words to the community. There is a lot of tension and a lot of things going on, not just in our local school districts, but in our nation. And it's, you know, I think that we need to come together and really understand and know that we have the best intentions for our students and for our district and for our families, and that, you know, Dr. Cascone is the leader in the in the schools, and he's the one that's, you know, really at the forefront and taking a lot of stress and pulling back and forth. And so I just want to say thank you, Dr. Cascone, and thank you to my colleagues. And I look forward to productive policy workshop. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Merklinger.
Yeah, I just I echo what Ms. Huerta just mentioned. You know, there's a lot of a lot of conversations going on over social media, and we're aware of it. There's a lot of emails, a lot of thoughts. And I would just say, you know, having grown up in West Orange, homegrown, lived here my whole life, you know, this, this is not representative of us when there's some when it gets to be nasty. But I definitely encourage the open communication and the understanding of other opinions and being open minded, and just know that Dr. C is at the head of the ship, and he has been doing a wonderful job of leading us. And so we have all the confidence in our district to keep moving forward. And I look forward to tonight's meeting and moving forward on our policy work. We've been doing a lot of great work, and we're almost there. So definitely looking forward to that. And I want to welcome back everyone that'll be starting next week, and to our students who I know are excited, and for our athletes that are starting up as well, and some of our extracurriculars, looking forward to you to a fun new season. So that was it.
Thank you, Ms. Merklinger. And Ms. Tony Cliff?
Oh, okay. Oh, I am unmuted. Okay. Just a few things. First, since I was not all, I'm not a night person. So when we logged off at 1:00 AM or after 1:00 AM the other night, I was remiss in thanking my board colleagues for electing me to be their vice president for this year, and also to welcome our newest colleague, Melinda Huerta. So we're excited you're with us, and I look forward to seeing what we're going to accomplish this year. Just wanted to give a couple legislative updates from the state level. Some news came out this week that 222,000 students have gained internet access this past year across New Jersey. So I think that's really significant. I think we've had a number of those were probably in West Orange here. So I'm glad that we're part of solving the the gap in 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 technology for our students. Also wanted to let you know that Governor Murphy's, excuse me, suspended the state exit exam that's been suspended just for this year for 2021 students. He also signed into legislation bill from the Senate 1028 and from the Assembly 3601, that is intended to ensure the Amistad Commission maintains its independence and to provide it with sufficient resources. And that also includes ensuring that instruction is included in in our academics. So that's good news there. And then we also signed a procurement contract for COVID-19, which was in the Assembly in 4461. So I think that's all for me. President Trick scales.
Thank you. And Mr. Rothstein?
Thank you. Hello, everyone. I just wanted to to say I'm glad that we have the board goals on the agenda here. And Ms. Trick scales, I wasn't certain, is it the intent to keep it on every agenda moving forward? I think it's a good idea. And so the fourth of those items, the fourth of our goals is the topic of tonight, moving forward with with policy. The board last year did a significant amount of work on that. And I'm looking forward to this year, working with Ms. Merklinger on making sure that we bring this across the finish line and and complete this goal. And that is all I have to say for tonight.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rothstein. And I appreciate you highlighting that because I meant to do that. So thank you for coming back around with pointing out that this is one of our board goals that we're working on tonight. I just wanted to share with the board a couple of things that are coming up. You did receive in your packet, just for review, a code of conduct for remote meetings that has come out from New Jersey School Boards, and that's for now and in the future. And also, we'll be taking a look soon at a code of governance of best practices. I didn't realize that that existed, and so I'd like us to take a look at it. And as we move forward with our committee work, I hope that committee members are beginning to connect. And under this code of governance, that's where we're going to talk about how our committees function, making sure that the work is ongoing, making sure that we have plans of action, informing the rest of the board about your agenda, and giving other board members an opportunity to contribute to your committee. So that's something that's coming up. And I've been trying to get to Charlene Peterson from School Boards to get her in to do some trainings for us. But she is the most popular woman in the state. And already, she's booked for February. And so we're trying to see if there's some other date that we can get her in. And I'm looking at training based on our own self evaluation and the areas in which we thought we could use some additional, some training. All right. And so now we will move on to the, oh, and I also gave you a calendar from School Boards. You'll find that in your packet. And that's just to help us do our work as we start the year out and making sure that we stay focused. It's sort of our plan of action. All right. And now we're going to move to questions from the public. And
pertaining to the agenda items.
On agenda items only. Thank you, Dr. Cascone. Questions from the public on agenda items only.
Thank you. Yes, as Madam President said, this is questions from the public on agenda items only. There will be another time, just like every other board meeting at the end, where it would be petitions and hearings from the citizens. So if anyone at this time has anything they need to speak about about agenda items only, use a raise your hand function at the bottom of the screen. And if you are one of our call in attendees, it is star nine, you just have to push it once, and you don't have to wait for anyone to stop talking to push that button. Elizabeth Redwine, if you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, it's Elizabeth Redwine. I'm calling from 10 Cobain Terrace. And I was just a little confused by the resolution on the agenda that Mr. Alper is going to be a volunteer consultant for negotiations with the W O A A and W E A. My understanding is that he would be unpaid and working to promote the interests of the B O E. And I guess I feel like we have people who do that, and those are the elected B O E members. In the last election, we, you know, the town voted and voted not to have Mr. Alper. I know we're all grateful for his service, but he was not voted to continue on the Board of Ed. So it's kind of straight, it almost feels like disregarding the vote to have him continue as essentially a member of the Board of Ed. And the optics aren't good to me. So if there's, you know, something I'm missing, they're, they're very well maybe, and I look forward to hearing the explanation. And then if this is an indication of not having a sufficient number of B O E members for the amount of work necessary, many people have shared a solution to this, which is to increase the size of the Board of Ed. I know Mr. Alper was against that, but you know, a seven person Board of Ed is something that would be a great idea if the problem is not having enough people. And then I just wanted to end with my sincere gratitude to the board for and to the superintendent for all of your hard work during this difficult time, and for maintaining a data driven approach to these difficult questions right now. So thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Jennifer Bussar. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and your name and address for the record.
Okay. Good evening. It's Jennifer Beazer, 82 Lawrence Avenue. And my question really follows up on Elizabeth's. She actually asked most of my question. Maybe you could provide a little clarification of what Mr. Alper's role will gonna be, will be, would he be sort of advising the board members as you're working through this, working through the negotiations? Or would he actually be participating in the negotiations? And I also will echo what Elizabeth said about thanking you all for what you have been doing for the district over these past months and longer for many of you or some of you. This has been a tough period, and it's really nice to have you all at the helm. Thank you.
Thank you. And I apologize for mispronouncing your last name. And Sandra Mordecai, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hi, thank you. Good evening. And I want to echo my thanks as well for the board for their hard work. And yeah, I agree with the previous two callers. That's the reason I was also calling in. Have another comment, though. You know, at a recent Board of Ed meeting, myself and other parents had asked for an update on union contracts. And we were told that there wasn't much happening. There hadn't been any meetings due to COVID. And as on three of the four contracts expired two years ago, and the teacher's contract expired a year ago, I find it strange that after the the town has spoken and not reelected Mr. Alper, that he would be on the agenda tonight for a one year appointment. That is the reason why you have a labor council. And I believe it's anywhere between 150,000 to 200,000 a year that's spent on the Giacobi firm for labor negotiations. So I'd just like to know the role that that volunteer would be playing. And a few years ago, when we asked for Mr. Charles to stay on as point person for the bubble, which ended up going way over budget, we were told can't do this. So it's very strange that the current attorney now advises you can do this, when a few years ago, we were advised we couldn't do that to ask Mr. Charles to continue his work with the bubble upgrade. Okay, and see my final question on this. I just wanted to know, as regards to the contracts, is the board supportive of Chapter 78? And what is the percentage of increase of insurance? And will the board go into the state educational health benefits plan this year, as you know, many have requested in the past? And my last comment or question, I guess, is for the first reading of the policies tonight, I looked on the website, and the same thing happened the last time you had a policy reading. There are no policies. There's no first or second reading policies. The last policy I saw there was back in December, and that was the second reading policy after it was approved. So if you could please make sure, I know on first reading, there's no comments. It's only on second reading, you have the comments. But please upload the policy so that the public can look at the policies. And I hope one of the policies will be a COVID policy, because I haven't heard what your daily requirements will be for both faculty, staff, and students. Will they have a daily test, a weekly test? And is this, will the staff be mandated to take a test or vaccination or whatever? So haven't heard anything. So hope the board has a COVID policy ready. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And at this time, do we have anyone else for questions on agenda items only using a raise your hand button? Okay, and there's no one else this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gravteza.
I can take the policy questions and then the
Okay, and then, okay, great.
Thank you, Ms. Mordecai. Great, great questions relative to policy. I'm not sure when the last time, if you looked at the site, very recently, we have, we have uploaded the that attachment of policies. And you know, what we've done with the site is, is we have a, we have the entire draft policy manual as a contiguous PDF on that site. And then we we put the the list of policy numbers that are up for first reading. And so it does require a member of the public who's interested in cross referencing the the policy number on the agenda, in going into that draft policy manual and locating it. But because we've been given that 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 draft policy manual as a contiguous PDF and not as individual PDFs, that's the way we have it. But that that list for first reading is in fact on the web page presently. And so we do encourage anyone who's interested in review of those policies to do that. As far as the COVID policy, yes, prior to the commencement of the school year, the the district was required to to have the board adopt the the school reopening plan, which was inclusive of corresponding policies. And that reopening plan has appendices with all of the health and safety protocol. If one were to go to the district website, main page, left side, COVID-19 resources, and look in the school reopening plan, one would see in those appendices, the health and safety protocol, including entry protocol for staff members and things of that nature. We've also adopted several other COVID related policies, including a remote learning policy. And I believe one, one other. So any policies that we've been obliged, and in fact, at the onset, over the summer, we've got guidance from our policy advisor Strauss Esme, and they actually assisted all of their clients, and they have well over 500 clients in the state with promulgating any policies that were required under the school reopening plan. So we do, in fact, have them. Now, just to answer specifically about testing protocol, presently, you know, our school reopening plan does not have a provision for staff testing, other than, you know, if and when a staff member is confirmed as being a close contact with a confirmed case. And then, of course, we follow the CDC and the Department of Health guidelines. I think that may have been it for the policy questions, Mr. Trix scale. So did I miss anything? Okay.
Okay. And thank you, Ms. Redwine, Ms. Beazer, and Ms. Mordecai for your questions about the board's request to have Mr. Alper sit in on negotiations. Let's be clear, no, he is not a board member. The town spoke. We understand that. We currently have two members on our negotiations committee. Of the five board members, we do have one conflicted member. And it was my suggestion, I was on the negotiations committee with Mr. Alper last year, and I benefited from his knowledge, his experience. And so knowing that we would be moving forward this year, negotiating all of the contracts for the board, with me being relatively new, and having Ms. Tony Cliff, who is brand new to negotiations, I thought it would behoove the board to have Mr. Alper assist us just within negotiations. He will not be meeting with the board. He will not be sitting with the board. He will not be reporting to the board. He will be with the two of us when we are meeting with the negotiations team from Local 68, W O A A and W O E A. So that is the rationale behind asking him to participate. All right. And I'll throw it back to Dr. Cascone as we move on to the first reading of our policies this evening.
Right. So you know, I just, you know, I don't know if the board were interested in putting a motion forward for discussion, or have had any follow up questions for me relative to what I presented during the the superintendent's report before you moved forward with a motion.
All right. So I am going to ask for a motion to approve the first reading of the attached board policies, attachment one. Is there a motion?
Yes, moved.
Thank you, Mr. Rothstein. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Merklinger.
I'll second, sorry.
Okay, we're so close, I heard you. Thank you, Ms. Merklinger. All right. And now we'll open it up for discussion. And so I think we had discussed that we can go through each, each of us had a section. Is that what we were suggesting, Ms. Merklinger and Dr. Cascone?
I think, based on the policies that we have here, yes, you know, if there were any discussion, but if anyone had any additional discussion points that they wanted to bring up after reviewing these, I know I had some on some of the ones that weren't in mine that are just more logistical questions, that that I would welcome those as well. So
Okay, would you like to start?
Sure. So what I did notice, and this is just, I'm not sure if this is just how Strauss Esme does their setup, but I noticed on some of the documents, such as 2340 for field trips, it says you have the option to choose different items. And there's not anything checked off. So I didn't know if we remove or take out anything. So where it says optional, I wasn't sure if we take that out, or if it just stays in, because that's how the, it's just the formatting thing. I'm not sure. So I just thought I would ask if we know how that's supposed to work.
Well, there were a couple. I think I just lost my my video. But I'm, I'm still here. I think there were a couple, and we actually, where there were options, and I think Dr. Cascone went through, because there were questions, certainly on the field trips, and we came up with a regulation. So it would apply.
Just, just to, just for the, you know, to kind of for clarification of process, as we move, any policies on which the board, you know, that are listed for first reading on which the board members had questions or comments, could be raised during the board policy workshop. If there are any persistent questions, first, first off, we can have an opportunity to discuss the field trip policy in greater depth, and could even decide upon these options if if the board felt comfortable doing that, unless the board felt that, you know, you would want administrators to be more involved in the selection of those options. In either case, I would mark off 2340 as a policy that's being put to the side, and would most likely not be moved forward on the 25th for second reading, unless of course, you've gone through the process of changes and had gone to Strauss Esme, and they sent the draft back, the final proof back. So to know that, you know, even if you were to move forward with the emotion and an approval of the motion for number five, first reading the attached board policies, still have an opportunity under the workshop to have these conversations.
I'm misunderstanding. I thought we're asking the questions now. So I will hold off then.
Okay, I just, yeah, just wanted to clarify.
Sorry about that.
No, no, it's okay. It's
So then, Terry, I don't have any, I apologize. I thought we were at, I thought we were discussing them now. So I guess we vote on the motion itself to move forward.
All right. So I have a motion and a second. And so we'll take a vote. Ms. Flores?
And I'm sorry, you're muted.
Mrs. Huerta?
Yes.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Vice President Tony Cliff?
Yes.
President Trick scales?
Yes. All righty. So now we're going to move on to Section 6. Is that correct? Are we moving right along? I'm touching base here. So may I have a motion for a personnel, one appointments, and two leaves of absence? May I have a motion? I'm so moved. Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Huerta? Thank you. All right. And Ms. Huerta? Thank you. All right. And, um, any discussion on that? All right, Ms. Flores.
Mrs. Huerta?
Yes.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Vice President Tony Cliff?
Yes.
President Trig scales?
Yes. All right. And may I have a motion for B? And this is the resolution regarding Mr. Alper to serve as a volunteer consultant to assist the board with its negotiations with the West Orange Administrators Association, the West Orange Education Association, and Local 68. Do you have a motion?
I'll motion.
Thank you, Ms. Merklinger. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Uh, discussion? There being none, Ms. Flores.
Mrs. Huerta?
Oh gosh, I'm so sorry. I just had a little trouble with the mute section.
Oh, did you have a, a question, Mr. Rothstein?
Yeah, I know I had read this before, but I just, uh, I, I forgot. I was looking for an end date to the, um, uh, to the association.
That's on the new agenda, I think, correct?
Yeah, Mr. Roth, yes, Mr. Rothstein, the, that, um, that edit was, was picked up. And so if I may.
1220, yes.
Um, and, um, the, there was an administrative edit made to the agenda, um, noting the end date of, uh, 1220. Um, and that was post reposted as well as such.
Okay, got it. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Okay, so we're taking a vote?
Do we, do we need to modify this now if there's a new, if there's a date that's added to this so that we're voting on this statement plus the end date?
Did you get the new agenda?
Yeah, you should have a copy.
It should be right there.
Thought I had it.
I did the same thing until I looked at the new one.
Sorry, I have like three of them, and I'm not sure which one.
It looks like this.
No, I know which it looks like. I just didn't, all the ones I have. Thank you. Ah, got it. Okay, thank you. Never mind.
Very good. All right. So we're in the middle of a vote. Did we start? I can't recall. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Flores.
Mrs. Huerta?
Uh, no.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Vice President Tony Cliff?
Yes.
President Trig scales?
Yes. All right. And the, the thing that we've all been waiting for with bated breath, we are about to begin our board policy workshop, the first one of the new year. And so our committee people, Ms. Merklinger and Mr. Rothstein, take it away, Ms. Merklinger.
Sure. Thank you, Terry. Um, I'm so excited because I think we did a lot of really great work and Ms. Trig scales. Um, and I did a lot of putting the plan together, and I'm really happy to see that it's coming through. So, um, I would just say, uh, you know, if we want to start with the first set of policies, um, to, to Dr. C's point, if there's any questions on, um, any of them. So the first one that I pulled out was the field trips, um, five, three, two, three, four, oh, as just being one of those ones where, um, there are options here. Um, and I don't know if everyone had a chance to look at it. But, uh, it looks like there are blanks that need to be filled in, and they weren't filled in. So, and that's in both the, the policy and the regulation. Um.
Yeah. Uh, it, it, just, just to give you some perspective here, a, a fairly standard, and I believe the way it is currently reflected in West Orange policy is that, um, you know, overnight um, or, um, out of state and certainly out of country, field trips tend to be kind of, and I could actually, let's see. This, 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 you know, kind of determines it by miles. Um, and the reason why the miles piece is there is that, you know, for example, um, you know, would you approve a trip that went to New York? I mean, it is out of state technically, but, you know, it's relatively close, um, as opposed to obviously Virginia. So, um, what I can do here is I can, um, I can solicit some guidance from Strauss Esme. I, I would recommend that it's the fourth option. Because it, you know, as opposed to approving all proposed field trips. Um, but really it's, I mean, it, it, I, I pose the question to the board is in terms of, uh, what the board would see as their, you know, as the role in, in, in kind of auditing the field trips, or the extent to which that would be more of a deference to administrative prerogative, unless of course it was distance and things of that nature. So thoughts?
Do we have, um, the ability to kind of tweak the language a little bit? Because I kind of, I mean, I kind of like the idea that they, it has to be somewhat curriculum guided, so tied to the curriculum in some way or shape or form. But I know just in the past, there's been discussion and concern over this school goes to this location. I know when I was in middle school, you know, sixth grade, we went to Philadelphia, seventh grade, we went to, uh, Baltimore, and eighth grade, we went to Washington DC, and these were overnight trips. Um, and I know that's changed over the course of the years. Um, and I know now it's based on interest at the school and by principle. So just, um, maybe something that we look at, and maybe this falls under, I think this probably falls under regulation, not necessarily policy. But, um, so on the policy side, if we could tie curriculum somehow into the fourth one, I think, um.
So, so the, just to kind of reference the, the opening blurb of it, the Board of Education recognized that field trips properly planned and integrated with the curriculum are an educationally sound and important part of the program of the schools that can supplement and enrich classroom instruction. Um, did you feel that it needed to have something more robust than that?
No. So in the next section, when it says the Board of Education challenges, your options are approval of proposed field trips, consider field trips, approve annually a list of potential field trips, and then approve those field trips that take students more than X number of miles. Um, so the language about the curriculum that's in the second and, uh, the second one, I thought was kind of nice to have, but it's not in the fourth one, the fourth option. So that's why I was wondering if there's the ability to kind of combine some of these.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess, I guess it, absolutely. I mean, and I, I think you're right, Mrs. Merklinger, when you talk about the regulation piece, because think about the regulations and being at the document that would be a, the guide for an administrator and ultimately for me is to say, is to be auditing that and to saying, well, wait a second, it's, this is, there's not a curricular purpose to this. It really becomes the question of, does the board feel that they should, um, or want to have a role in serving as a, an overseeing, seeing, uh, authority, you know, to, to do that? Do you want that responsibility to do that? Or is that a responsibility that you feel resides more in the realm of administrative decision making?
I, I would like to leave that with the administrators, um, because I think that's really where it belongs.
Yeah.
Um, so I don't want to micromanage, um, who goes where. So I, I think that whole regulation piece, once we clean up the, the policy piece, belongs to Dr. Cascon and his, um, administrative staff.
Absolutely. I a hundred percent agree with you on that.
But that being said, I, I, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just gonna have, no, no, that's all right. Um, about the alternatives, um, my concern is about, you know, who is paying, um, if the inability pays students on field trips. So I guess I have to refer back to that. So, um, my concern is if we have some field trips that are cost prohibitive, is the board picking up the cost on that? Um, for students who are in this category.
Yeah, I, I think by statute, um, you know, you, you, number two is a non-negotiable. Uh, it really, the, the question just becomes, you know, and I would say it's fairly uncommon for districts to choose option one, just because it, you know, certainly in this day of financial restrictions to, to pay the cost for all students, all trips would be prohibitive. But as you could see, the statute referenced there that you sort of, you sort of have to do too.
Right.
You know, and that's what I would suggest, just because I don't think it's fiscally feasible or the other. So.
Is there a limit that we want to impose on what parents should be, you know, can pay out of, um, pocket?
Yeah. So if you look on the next page, um, you know, um, there's, there's an optional, uh, section, which is the determination of a student's inability to pay will be based upon the student's eligibility for free and reduced meals in accordance with the board policy number eight, five, four, zero. Um, so I, I think that, again, like that, that sort of gets down, I think, into the regulation of where that, that would be kind of an interactive process between the family and the school, um, to determine, you know, if, what if any uh, financial, uh, responsibility the family could bear, um, you know, um, if, you know, if maybe none. Um, uh, that, that's kind of my understanding, just in practice, how that plays out. Um, of course, it's a, you know, that's a, it's a delicate, it's a delicate process, you know, because folks, you know, aren't always necessarily, you know, necessarily comfortable being forthright with the fact that they can't pay. So more time, they just, they won't go. So we can't go, right. So, um.
And then what is that child lose out if they, you know, the parent doesn't want to have that discussion with an administrator? You know, that child does not get that whole experience. So I think there's, you know, we have to look at that because if we're looking at sort of how we're gonna be equitable across the district when we know we have, you know, a number of students who can't afford some of these things, how do we make it equitable? How do we make sure that these students don't just opt out? Because then they're losing an educational experience that they could have had.
I think this goes back to the administration piece, though, that we were talking about, that it's, it would be up to Dr. Cascon and the, the individual administrators of each school to know, you know, to look at what, what, what is the interest even? Um, and to go with that, because I would hate for the students to lose out on an opportunity as well, um, for something that's known as a tradition, right? So, you know, when I was in fifth grade, I knew, hey, in eighth grade, I get to go to Washington DC. Now, as a student, did I have any inclination as to what my parents' financials was? Absolutely not. I had no idea. Um, you know, my grandfather was a custodian. So I, you know, I never knew anything. Um, but, so for folks that, um, are interested and do want to participate, I would hate to take it away from them. Um, but I do think we'd be, you know, cognizant of those. Um, so I would say that we would probably, and just my opinion, um, is that we would leave it up to the administrators and Dr. C to, under the regulations piece, to determine that. I think that's not something that needs to necessarily be in the policy itself. Um.
And, and I'm looking at the regulations, um, and, and I'm seeing that, I, you know, I'm doing a quick scan of it, and, and I'm not seeing, perhaps that's the ticket. Perhaps the ticket is with it, because it's not in there. There's no reference in the regulations to, you know, a process of, of outreach and ascertaining, um, financial feasibility for parents. And I think that, that, that should be something that's added to the regulations, which is, you know, and maybe it's a, a letter of, um, you know, a, 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 a specific letter of, uh, uh, of outreach will be sent to all school families qualifying for free and reduced lunch, notifying them that there is the option for financial assistance and providing a discreet contact point, um, to, you know, to, um, you know, to, to reach out to, to have that conversation, right?
Uh, Dr. Merk, I just may add, because I did notice that in the West Orange policy, the ones that are on the website, because that's what I was cross referencing.
Good. Yeah. Which number is, could you just tell me which number that is?
Uh, yes, I'm gonna see. Hold on, because I had it all in my notes. Oh, wait. Yes, six, one, five, three. Sorry.
Six, one, five, three. Okay, go ahead.
So it, in the West Orange policy, it states no pupil is to be denied the right to participate because of inability to pay. And so I know Ms. Tony Cliff had mentioned that, you know, she brought that up as well. Um, and exactly just how, um, Ms. Merklinger said, you know, she knew that this, these were certain trips, and she didn't really think about how, you know, financially, um, if she was able to do that. But I remember very specifically also being, um, at Edison Middle School, the students at Gregory or students at Roosevelt got to go to Rock and Horse Ranch on a sleepover, sleepaway camp and, or a sleepaway field trip. And we never, um, we were like, why didn't we go? Why didn't we get the chance to go? We just, we just went to, um, medieval times.
But I think, so, Melita, to your point, I think that goes back to what Dr. C and what, um, Ms. Trig tells are saying, that it's based on the administrators. Um, and from what I understand, and Dr. C, you can correct me if I'm wrong here, each individual school determines with their PTA where their school is going. So if they didn't ask to go, that wasn't approached. Um, and that's just my understanding of it. And, um, I think that goes back to, that play, kind of plays into it a little bit.
The equity issue.
The equity issue, and that we have different schools doing different things, and it really depends on the power of your fundraising at your PTA. And you look at like, you know, Gregory or St. Cloud, that can blow the doors off of any kind of fundraising. And then, you know, where does that leave us? I mean, it's a huge disconnect for us, and especially if it's an academic, um, program where they're learning something that it's, you know, then you have a whole pool of students in a certain grade level in a whole school that are not getting that same experience. So I think there has to be some type of equity imposed by the board to say, you know, we need to make sure that all of our students in all of the grade levels are getting the same experience and that there's, you know, especially when it's curriculum-based, and there's something that, you know, they're supposed to learn from that. We can't leave out a huge pool of students.
Right. And we had conversations about the field trips that are related to the curriculum. And maybe we need to tie that in somehow. But back to your point, Ms. Tony Cliff, about an amount, if we wanted to put in an amount. Now, when, when we get to those end of the year trips that are big and extravagant and cost a whole lot more money in your fundraising along the way, that's very different than a classroom teacher is taking a field trip that is related to the curriculum. Um, not a required field trip, but a related field trip. So maybe we certainly should talk about, talk about an amount so that some schools, um, aren't, aren't able to do as much as, as others in that regard. Um, some districts do have amounts in their policies. Um, so maybe that is something that we can entertain.
And I would like to just add to that. Um, so without moving away from it, um, you know, what I would recommend maybe for, in terms of regulations, um, just something, if we aren't already doing it, have the schools along the same level. So your, our elementary schools should be meeting together across the board, you know, maybe it's a principal's meeting or administrator's meeting. Um, I know, I think we had in third grade, everyone goes down to town hall, right? And, um, all third graders do that, um, to go meet the mayor and see how the municipality works. Um, you know, when I was at, Roosevelt was the only, Roosevelt and Edison were the only two middle schools at the time. You know, we all went. So this, the entire sixth grade, Edison and Roosevelt, we all went to the same place, the same trip. Um, we went on various weekends because of just the, the idea of having, you know, that many children out of the school at the same time was obviously not ideal. Um, but we all went. Um, and the same thing for seventh and eighth grade. We all went to the same place. Um, so I just wonder if maybe there's just more discussion, but I think that's more, that's regulation, that's not policy. Um, and I think that's something at the school level or at the administration level that can be taken. I don't think we as the board should, should input on that.
So let me, let me just take stock here, because I think this, and this is, then see, this is the beautiful thing about policy work. Because you think, ah, Paul, you, you know, it's so, but, but you, it's like the onion. When you start to talk about these policies, it really, you start, it, it threads into a variety of different things that are, that are really important. And, you know, we talk about this equity audit that we're going to be starting in the second half of the year. I think this, this is, this is an example and something which that audit might turn up. And then it really, you know, it, it comes down to, um, you know, we, we don't, we don't want to, we want to be able to offer the best to all of our kids, right? So knowing that because of fundraising restrictions or financial limitations, that not all schools will necessarily be able to do the same trips, how are we going to compensate for that? Are we going to, um, are we going to adjust the trips? Or are we going to look at creative ways to ensure that we allocate the funding to be able to subsidize those trips where everybody should go? And whether that's the grant fund, funding, or, or whether it's even an allocation within the local budget, I, I think it's a larger conversation. But, um, you know, what I would suggest on this one is I think that there's some work I need to do administratively on the regulations. But just to, just to take stock of what we do know at this time, um, going from the top of the policy, uh, my understanding is that we would be choosing option four. Um, we need to determine what that mileage would be. Um, we, we're choosing the second option under alternatives. We, we're choosing the second option under alternatives, right? I, I believe that we, it seems to me like we would want to include that optional clause of the determination of the student's inability to pay will be based upon the student's eligibility for free and reduced meals.
A question, just a question on that, because, you know, with administration, you have more experience than I do with that. Is that a, a fair marker for, for whether students' families are able to afford typical field trips where they're asked to chip in? I just don't know. I have no idea.
No, it's, it's, I mean, it's, it's, it's a good question, right? Because you, just because a family may not necessarily qualify, or they may not necessarily have submitted the application and not be on the free and reduced lunch roster, right? So, so it might be worth adding the determination of a student's ability to pay will be based upon the stu, the student's eligibility for free and reduced meals in accordance with board policy. Maybe, and/or other factors, circumstances as determined by the administration?
Yeah, I, I like, I, I believe that in my past experience with, with, maybe it was with Edison, that I understood there was a policy where a family could reach out directly to the principal at the school and just express a concern about affordability of a field trip. And that everything would be done, you know, that was within the means of the administration to make that possible for the student.
Yeah, that, right. And, and so the, I'm sorry, Ms. Tony Cliff.
No, and I was just gonna say that a lot of times at Edison, though, that was done by the PTA who's, who had been fundraising all year. And the PTA would make sure that those students could go. You know, but that was a relatively affordable thing and easier to do than some of the other field trips that are now up to $450, $550 for an end of a year school trip. So that's less likely for a PTA to be able to raise that kind of money to be able to have the amount of students that don't go on those trips. So that's, you know, another concern, because there's plenty of middle-class families that may not be able to afford that either.
So I just think, I'm, I'm a little bit hesitant about putting specific dollar amounts in because we don't know how long these policies are going to last for, and times change and, you know, things change. And, and I feel like it's better to have a little more flexibility here, but to have a sensitivity on the part of the administration that, you know, when you're considering field trips, if a field trip's going to be expensive, it might not be a bad idea to take the pulse of the students' families who are going to be going and get a sense of how they feel about it. I mean, I don't want to dictate how that should be managed, but I guess the key here is sensitivity to cost rather than mandating a specific number is, is more where I'm landing.
Right. And, and I just want to add that one of the reasons a number might go in would be to guide the teachers. So that they know, don't go over this, that, that would be a reason. So.
And then that is, that is noted, while there isn't a, a dollar amount in the regulations, there is a, a provision which says that the, you know, the building principal may deny a field trip request. It doesn't actually say, it's a blank, but I would, it would fall really to the building principal may deny a field trip request when the anticipated cost is excessive. So, you know, that's up to administrative prerogative. You know, I can, you know, my sense of these regulations is, is that, you know, I need to put together a, a small group of principals and just kind of work through these regulations with the principals and come up with some draft, draft edits for these blank spaces to, to bring to the board on the 25th to, to take a look at. I, I, I think that some, some of this sense, the, the sensitivity to which Mr. Rothstein refers at this idea of outreach to families, but I think that, that can all be incorporated into the regulations, though it's not presently in these draft regulations from Strauss Esme. I think this, this conversation that we've kind of happened into, and one we've had before about this equity, I think it's a bigger conversation. I do think it's one we have to sort of resolve. But I don't know if it's necessarily something that would be resolved through at least this, at this adoption of the policy. You know? So I think it's safe to say that I have a little more work to do on this one. I, I, I feel, I think that, you know, it's, the board has provided some helpful feedback. This is one I think we'll put to the side. Let me do a little bit more work and bring it to you, a little bit more baked for the next reading. Now, remember that I can bring this policy forward on the 25th and not necessarily for the next work session and not bring it forward for a second reading, but rather just bring it forward for further conversation and review. Because I, I think we're a little bit, I think we're, we, we got a little more work to do on this one.
So the next, the next, it's more of a question. I know we had, during our last policy workshop, we had mentioned about employment contract assignment transfer. So a lot of the, the teaching staff members and support staff members, a lot of these policies, we were going to get input from HR.
Do you have a policy number in particular?
Oh, I'm sorry. So like, um.
Yeah. If I could just add, these were my sections. And in the notes that I sent to Dr. Cascone, that one says review by Dr. Joe.
Okay, that's what I thought.
So I, I am hoping, Dr. Cascone, that we did that.
Yeah, the, I mean, 3124 is, is one that, that's been flagged for discussion tonight. I have that in the packet. And, you know, this is a, this, this employment contract policy is a, it's a pretty standard. It's a pretty standard contract. We have had it reviewed by Dr. Joe, and there's nothing unusual about this.
Yeah, that's what I just want, I think I just wanted to follow up on Terry's notes about that, so.
Yeah.
Just want to read through it real quick.
And there was one right after that, 3130, assignments and transfers. And then 3146, there were a number of those for Dr. Joe. 3270, yeah.
So 3, 3124, 3130. And there was, you read me the, and the last one? Was there another one? I don't see those. Ms. Trix, just read those numbers to me one more time. 3124, 3130.
130, 3146.
And?
3270.
3270. Now, 3146 and 3270, are they, they're, they're, they're reflected on the motion that we just approved, correct?
Yes.
So they've gone through first reading. So what I will do for 3124, 3130, 3146 and 3270 is I will put them through another review. And, you know, unless there, unless there's something turned up, then I think you could expect that those would be on the 25th for second reading.
Okay, great.
And the next one that, I'm sure it's here so that everyone can take a look at it. Regulations very long. What's on? I didn't see it in here in the packet.
Okay. Which one was it?
But I know we had talked about, and I don't think there's any issues with it being the policy, but the high, high school graduation. 5460.
That's not in here?
I didn't see it.
That was one that we had flagged.
That, yeah, that was one that we had already mandated, right? I apologize. So my question was, did, did we already approve that? So didn't we?
Yes.
So.
Did you have, what was your question?
My question was going to be, didn't we already do it?
Yes, yes.
So do we just first read one that's already adopted?
5460 is on the list?
It's on, yeah, it's on here. That's why I just wanted, I was like, did I?
Yes. So, so the, the, the graduation policy is on first reading?
Yes. So we have, and I thought, because I thought we had, yeah, I thought we had done that one. So I just wanted to, and the students smoking, I thought, 5533.
Both, both of those have actually already been adopted.
Right.
And that's because they show up in two columns, right?
Yeah.
Exactly. Exactly. So that, that's an interesting, so that's an interesting, that's an interesting procedural question. Is if, is, it's, if, if they had previously been approved for adoption and they're inadvertently put on the agenda for a, a first reading, do they have to go through a second reading again to be adopted again?
See, I thought that's why we were going to have the discussion before we voted on them.
Yeah. See, I didn't, yeah, I didn't realize that we had a little.
That was, that was in.
Question then.
That was in my head. Let's discuss and then vote.
Well, you know what? I tell you what, I tell you what, you know what? This is easy. Give me the policy numbers again.
Sure. It is 5460.
Uh huh.
5533.
5533.
Do you want the other ones that are on here as well?
There are others. Go ahead.
2411.
Yeah, those shouldn't have been on there. 2411.
2430.
2430.
2431. Now, those were both, that was co-curricular activities and athletic competition. I know we had pulled those, so I'm not sure if we actually had adopted them just yet on second reading.
That 2431?
2430 and 2431. That's, that was what the act, the activity.
Those, those, those I am not going to put on the 25th or second reading because I do believe that those are actually still going through some edits. But were there more?
And then 8600, that was student transportation.
Okay. So what I will do is I'll put 5460, 5533 and 860 on the 125 agenda for a second reading, just for good measure. And we'll just, we'll just re, you know, we'll just re-adopt them. I think that's the easiest thing. The other ones will be, and 2411?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Then the next one, I noticed there were blanks, but I don't think it, so my question was, does it have to get removed from? Again, this is this format.
Policy number?
5511, dress and grooming. And this is for students. So I didn't know, it says school uniform, which obviously we don't do here in West Orange. So I didn't know if that just needs to be removed from the policy or if this is just a format.
Let's, let me pull it up here.
Yeah, and I had actually made a note on that policy that there were optional statements that needed to be addressed.
On the, the pol, not the.
There's policy and there's regulation and both have blanks.
So let's look at policy.
So it says optional school uniform provision.
Yeah, so that, that will pull out.
So as I say, so, yeah.
I don't want to be presumptuous. Do you guys want to roll some, some school uniforms? Like, that's, that's the power of the board right here. You get to, with the wave of a pen, you could completely change the landscape. I'm kidding, Mrs. Tony Cliff.
As, as someone who had to wear a uniform, I will tell you that it makes life much easier, but I absolutely support the ability to choose your own clothing because I did argue with my parents on a daily basis.
So we're going to omit that. That'll be omitted. Looks like, so we'll have to list the schools, insert schools. So this was one that'll go back to Strauss Esme for them to do this. And then the board school uniform policy will obviously come out as well. So the, the policy looks like pretty straightforward. The regu, this is one where it, it, we probably won't get it on until February because I'm going to need to have the administration put together a committee of administration and, you know, who knows? Maybe even some of the, some of the students, you know, to kind of look at this and work through it. So let's table this one for now, and I'll bring that forward to the board. I can at least get Strauss Esme working on editing the policy. The regulations are going to take a little more time.
Dr. Cascone, your idea about students is wonderful. That, that's an excellent idea.
And I would just ask that it be addressed at each school level, so elementary versus middle versus high school. Because obviously there are differences at, at each maturity level and age-wise. And then I think that was the last one that had any blanks. The, oh, yes. So under 5517, school district issued student identification cards, there's a, an option we have to check off. I think it's all school buildings.
See here.
But I'm not 100, I, I believe we issue identification cards to all students in all school buildings.
Ms. Tony Cliff, I'm sorry, you're muted.
I don't think we do in elementary schools, do we?
I'm mute, sorry.
I wasn't sure, I wasn't sure if that.
I think, I think we're just, I think it's just middle schools and high school, but I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to inquire about that. I should know, but I don't. I know obviously high school and I believe middle school.
Yeah, middle school hasn't.
They do.
High school, yeah. My question was that we had talked about using the swipes of the card to be able to board the buses. That would give us bus rosters of who was on the bus, which came after the tragic November 16th snowstorm that we had where students were stranded for hours. Snowmageddon for three inches of snow. But that had been talked about, so it would, if we had to issue IDs, it would have to be, and that was going to be part of the system. All the students would have to get the, the IDs. And that they would be needed on the buses, which may want to be noted in the policy, I don't know, or the regulation.
Let me, let me look. I know that, I know that, you know, if, if I, if I can be frank on this one, because I, I, I kind of, when I first came in, you know, that was, was sort of like half-baked. And I think one of the challenges is, you know, really all students, but you know, the, actually the younger ones should probably be, be more conscious than the older ones, to be honest. But, but I think the point remains is, is that so a student doesn't have the card, you know, what's the protocol? Do they get on anyway? And, and there's also some additional expense associated with that because those, the cards, there, there's an additional cost for each one of those cards. So there, there's a couple logistic layers I have to work through on that. And, and find out.
If we go back, if we go back and require uniforms that have RFID chips woven and material, we can solve both of these problems.
You know, the, the wisdom of having you as the policy co-chair is revealing itself already.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Cascone.
All right, let me, let me, I have to inquire about this anyway, so I'll follow up on it. And that was, this is, of course, do you, do you remember, what was the name of that? Do you remember? See, this is, this is, yeah, this is the, this is, John would know. John would have been able to answer that. I'll find.
No pressure.
Mrs. Mendez does know as well.
Yes, she would know for sure.
We'll table, we'll table that one. I'll look into it.
Dr. Cascone, I did want to also mention, because I know that in the, one of the, like, the second to last paragraph says, any student who fails to have identification card in their possession or fails to present it when required, may be denied access to an event or activity and may be subject to appropriate discipline. I think that's where you're saying we need a bit more clarification, is what kind of discipline?
Yeah, well, I, I think that, that, that would be, you know, that, that would, does this have a corresponding regulation?
I don't see one.
Aren't they all supposed to?
No, it does not have a regulation.
So that, what, what that might be, maybe appropriate, subject to appropriate discipline as outlined in the student code of conduct. I mean, that's always going to be a, you know, a, a administrative. I mean, that's always going to be a, um, a, a, you know, a, a, administrative, uh, discretion. Um, but I, I think we add, as outlined in the Student Code of Conduct, it just, um, you know, it's within, it's within the parameters of whatever that infraction is, um, is, 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 um, considered under the Student Code of Conduct. Um, but it, the, the policy itself would not get more granular than that, although I'm sort of surprised that since it does reference discipline, that there isn't a regulation, but do you feel that by adding that additional line, Mrs. Huerta, that, that, um, adds a little bit more, um, detail to it?
Yeah, I just kinda feel like, um, it goes, to me, it kinda goes into a line with, like, the thought of policing the students, right? I think that that's what, um, the concern for me, uh, what, what that brings up to me, you know? Maybe you can even word it differently, because I feel like discipline is like, you're in trouble, but.
Right, I mean, eh, right, so, so I, I, I think, you know, I think it's, um, you know, the, I think the, the important thing to remember is, is that while we certainly, you know, do not want the administrative cultures of our building to be one of, you know, kind of oppressive and, and police-like, this, by the same token, you know, our principals and the administration are statutorily responsible for the safety and security of the building and the students, and so, um, you know, I think if you, like, for example, um, you know, if, for example, if the, the student was denied access to the event or activity, and then, um, hopped the fence and started a fight, right, um, what, you know, there, you know, we want the policy to be able to give the administration the necessary, uh, discretion and authority to ensure that they could administer consequences, um, that, um, that, that are appropriate. That being said, there's a larger conversation at play, which we've talked about, which is the idea of restorative justice, um, and restorative practices, you know, when we're addressing student behavior, and that we're not going right to a, you know, a harsh punitive consequence, but we're trying to change behavior is, at, more than we're trying to punish. Um, I will just note for the board that, um, in your, in your bylaw, in your equity and nondiscrimination bylaw, it specifically does reference restorative justice and restorative practices, and so, you know, that is now becoming the focus of our building principals and our assistant principals to implement that more in the way they're disciplining students. Um, but I, I understand what you're saying.
But I guess in this case, my, my question would be also about accountability, so discipline in terms of accountability, so you need to wear, you need to have your student ID, and that's, that's for safety purposes, right, in, in this day and age, um, you know, I, if, especially with access to events, um, that we're limiting, we're, you know, with a limited number of folks that can attend, and we're saying only students of, let's say, West Orange High School, for example, um, or even in the school itself, um, you know, preventing folks that shouldn't be in the school at the time. Um, so I think there is that accountability, and, and the result, I, I don't wanna say the result, but if you forget it, your accountability to have it, a- and that's your accountability as a student to have that, um, and so if detention is the outcome of that, is that, you know, I don't wanna say, you know, that is a form of discipline, right, detention, because you didn't have your, um, your student ID, so I understand the, the idea of restorative justice and, and, you know, um, not, uh, not wanting to police our students, but there is also that personal accountability that they are still responsible for, so you know, we, there is that fine line of responsibility and accountability versus, um, the, the, I guess, in terms of discipline, um.
I, I mean, keeping, you know, I heard you, uh, keeping, keeping with, you know, and this, I'm just gonna pose this question to the board, um. Right, so, does, keeping with the, the values as expressed within your bylaw, do, do you wanna, do you wanna put an and/or in there? Something to the effect of discipline and/or restorative practices as outlined in the Student Code of Conduct, and determined to pro, as appropriately by the stu, by the district, by the building administration?
However. I think that sounds pretty fair.
Yeah, can I offer something here, because, um, coming out of higher ed, you have to have your ID card on you at all times, and you know, you also have your food, you know, several thousand dollars worth of your food plan on there, so when you swipe in the cafeteria, there's a purpose for the ID other than to just have it for security reasons. And I think that is, you know, when we're instilling in our kids this sense of accountability, that when they go to the next level of their education, that is used to get into buildings, to get into secure labs, to get in, you know, get food out of the cafeteria and, and the, you know, the, the commissary or whatever little, you know, it is used for so many things, for bus, you know, your bus fare around campus, so there's a, a larger reason to use that, now, if we wanna really be visionary and think down the line of how do we integrate that with the Machio's food plan, so that, you know, parents then put money on the card, and then, you know, they use the card for their food, they use the card for their buses, so it becomes a part of them, it's not just, oh, I have, have this ID, I think there's a sense from the students that, you know, they have an ID, but they, it's not really used for a whole lot of things, you know, most of the time, the students know where they're going, they know, you know, it may be needed for, to get into a game or something like that, but beyond that, there's, you know, sort of a lack of purpose for an overall ID. And if we had it where it's something that they needed, like, really needed, you know, you lose that ID, you're not getting on the bus, you're not getting in the building, you're not getting your, your lunch. Then it becomes something that becomes, you know, that they can be accountable for, because it's something that they really do need to, to go through their day.
Yeah, that's true.
So, I know this is like, down the road, but.
I, I mean, I, and I guess, just kind of a tangent to what, what you just said, Mrs. Tonic Cliff, is that you're, you're right, um, I guess the idea is, 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 you know, when you talk about, you know, how would we handle a seventh grade student? You know, who, you know, failed to present it versus a senior, right, and if we're talking about the younger student, and go, and I'm thinking to Mrs. Huerta's question is, is, you know, do, do we, and I think it just speaks to the fact of, like, when we, anywhere the idea of discipline is reflected in a board policy, do we always wanna have discipline side by side with like, an and/or restorative practices? To demonstrate the board's, um, espousal of the fact that when at all possible, side by side with discipline is the consideration of a restorative practice, as opposed to just a punitive consequence. And I, I, I would suggest that, that makes sense. But, you know, I would present that to the board.
I think that's an excellent idea, and, um, you know, restorative justice is, is not punitive, and, um, my mom taught me growing up, if you're well-disciplined, that's a good thing, so discipline doesn't always have to be bad either. So, um, I think using both those terms interchangeably would, would cover, um, a lot of territory. So.
I've made note.
And then, and then the next couple, the next few that I had, um, I know the, everyone doesn't have, I don't think everyone has copies of, um, but it was the use of school facilities, um, I wanted to keep our West Orange policy, um, versus the Strauss SSM one. Um, and then this, I wanted to take a look at, oh, I'm sorry, it's, um, seven, five, one, zero. In here.
It's not in the packet, you said?
No, it's not in the packet. Um.
I'm just gonna make.
Hold that for our next.
I'm just gonna make note of seven, one, five, zero. That's, seven, one, five, zero is the Strauss SSM policy?
Yes.
And, uh, could you just, uh, Ms. Merklinger, tell me the West Orange policy?
Uh, choo, choo, choo. I have it in one of my lists.
What was it?
It looks like it's seven, one. Seven, one, one, zero. On the.
Seven, one, one, zero is W O, so what I will.
It's not on here either?
No, the use of school facilities?
It's, it's one, three, uh, one, three, three, oh. Oh, yeah, one, three, three, oh.
Seven, five, seven, five, one, zero?
Yeah, use of.
I apologize, I gave you the wrong number, I, I apologize.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, so.
And that was a mandated one. Have we already approved that?
Pulled. We pulled that.
I, I don't thi, I don't think so.
We didn't.
And, and so, so seven, one, five, oh is the Strauss SSM, and the West Orange?
Is one, three, three, zero.
One, three, three, zero, so, that's one where I'll, I'll note that as, um, one to pull for for our next po, for our next policy work session, just.
So that's a leftover, right?
Yes.
That's a leftover.
A mandate, yep.
Okay.
And then, um, the, so it's also, um, so the next couple are not, uh, folks don't have copies, um, so I'll just give you the number, it's nine, one, two, five, school district cable television channel, we do have a specific W O policy, which is one, 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 zero, point, zero, one.
Say that one more time?
So, the, the Strauss SSM is nine, one, two, five. The West Orange, uh, policy is one, 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 zero, point, zero, one.
And this is the s- school cable channel?
Yes, and there are blanks and options to fill out on that one.
I'm going to note this one, Mrs. Merklinger, as the list of policies to pull for a deep dive at the next policy work session?
Yeah. Um, and the same for, so, uh, school visitors, nine, one, five, oh, we have a West Orange policy, twelve, fifty.
School visitors. These are all column three or four?
Yes, um, and they're all under the series nine hundred.
Got it.
Um. And then, uh, nine, one, eight, one. Which, um, we also have a West Orange policy for.
And that is, what number?
Uh, that is, uh, twelve, fifty.
Twelve, fifty?
Um, that was also one that was in the must adopt as is, our column two, but we had pulled it.
Pulled it, and, and what, and what's?
With, uh, the athletic director and Mr. Moore.
What's the title?
Volunteer athletic coaches and co-curricular activity advisors and assistants. And that was one I think we're gonna take back to, uh, Mr. Bly and, uh, Mr. Moore.
Okay.
Um, and then nine, and one, nine, oh, community organizations.
Nine, one, nine, oh?
Yes, and the West Orange policy is twelve, thirty.
And that is?
Community organizations.
I'm sorry, community organizations, okay.
And then the last two that I had, um, was, uh, Strauss SSM is nine, seven, zero, zero, special interest groups. And the West Orange policy is one, six, zero, zero.
One, six, zero, zero. Special interest groups, okay.
Um, and then the last one is nine, seven, one, three.
Nine, one, seven, three?
Uh, nine, seven, one, three, sorry.
Nine, seven, one, three?
Recruitment by special interest groups, it's mandated, but we had not pulled it yet. But there was, um.
And the West Orange?
That I def, we, I don't think we have one, because I don't have a number for.
And, and just, re, re, and rec, recruitment by special interest groups?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, this is good.
Those are, those are all my questions.
Ms. Merklinger, what about seven, five, two, oh?
Seven, five, two, oh, I, um, I, I, we had discussed that previously, so I was okay with what we have.
Okay, so that, that's a go.
Which one, which one?
Because that's leftover from not yet adopted.
And that's on, was that on this list, this, this, uh, tonight's?
Yes.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So this is a leftover.
Alright.
And Doc, three, five, one, four, just for your information, is the West Orange.
Three, five, one, four, okay. Is, uh, for recruitment by special interest group?
No, that's loan of school equipment.
And that's, uh, and what's the?
Not yet adopted.
And what's the, um, the Strauss SSM policy?
Seven, five, two, oh.
Seven, five, two, oh, but that one you, was, was, uh, clear to be, there's no need for further edit of that one?
Right.
Okay. Okay. Um, let me just get this down here. Seven, one, seven, one, five, oh, use of school facilities.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were referring to the school naming facilities, seven, two, five, oh, seven, five, two, oh. Um, I still wanted to discuss the West Orange policy, okay?
Yep, let me just, let me just make sure I'm getting all these down here. So I'm pulling what we want for the next meeting.
Yeah, I, and I was just going off of the ones that we did the first reading on.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I, um, just going back to, uh, if you'll, if you'll just humor me here, um, Strauss SSM policy, two, four, three, oh.
Four, um, two, four, three, oh, co-curricular activities.
What, do, was there a, um, West Orange policy for that?
Uh, yes.
Go ahead.
Six, one, four, five.
Okay.
Six, one, four, five, point, one, and six, one, four, five, point, two.
Point, one, six, one, four, five, point, two, and, um, for two, four, two, four, three, one?
Oh, that was, I'm sorry, that was, um, so for two, four, three, oh, it's six, one, four, five. And then for two, four, three, one, it's six, one, four, five, point, one, and six, one, five, six, one, four, five, point, two.
And that's, uh, what's the title of that?
Athletic competition.
Athletic competition.
And two, four, three, oh was adopted, right, in August?
Yes.
Two, four, three, oh?
Yes.
Yeah.
But not two, four, three, one?
Correct.
No.
This is six, one, four, five, point, one, six, one, four, five, I'm just making note of all these, because there's the ones I'm gonna pull for next time, okay? Okay, I, I'm, I'm all caught up here, um, we, we do have the remaining, um, policies that were pulled for just further um, review tonight, and, and what I might suggest is, is if you look at, um, the, the one atta, the one, uh, board attachment that I gave with the highlighted numbers, um, that one there, yep. May, maybe if we just, you know, start from the top and go through, just kinda state, go in numerical order, um. Somebody had flagged identification, I think it might have been, I think Ken did that, but did bylaw, um. Pre-kindergarten through twelve. Say that again, Linda. Pre-k, kindergarten through twelve, um, okay, eighteen through twenty-one. Good. That's an easy one. Thanks, Mrs. Huerta. Mrs. Huerta, make, making her presence felt already on the policy work session, nicely done. Um, thank you, I appreciate that. It really, like, we, there's so many details flying around that, you know, as long as somebody, as long as somebody remembers. Alright, uh, one, zero, one, forty-three, point, two, student representatives to the Board of Education.
Do you want the West Orange policy number one for that?
Yeah, is he, would you?
Nine, one, 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 and nine, one, one, three?
Nine, two, seven, zero, and nine, two, seven, one.
All deal with student representatives?
Uh, I'll deal with board members, it's all part of, oh, I'm sorry, nine, one, one, nine, one, one, three.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry.
Nope, I was looking at the, I was looking at this, I was looking at the wrong one.
Yes, I'm looking.
Nine, one, four, oh.
Nine, one, four, oh, okay, now, I think, I think Mr. Alper's feedback was that the West Orange policy was, he thought was, um,
murky.
Was mur, was murky, is that what he said?
That's what the note said. We're just quoting.
It sounds like Ken. I didn't mean that affectionately, um.
I, I.
So let's, so, so let's, let's.
Dig in?
Yeah, let's dig in here a little bit. Um, and Mrs. Huerta, do you have the, the board, the West Orange policy in front of you?
West Orange policy?
Do you? Well, would, give us a little, give us a little kind of snapshots of, of how they may differ.
So, and I think this may come down to one of the discussions that we've had in the past where it's policy versus regulation. And in our West Orange policies, we've have a lot of regulations tied into it. So the requirements of the position are listed here. So students who are selected, um, have to have a three P A, three point O G P A or higher. Be in eleventh or twelfth grade in good standing with academics and student conduct. Permission of their parents to serve, um, provide transportation, his or her own transportation to board meetings. Attend scheduled board meetings, study the board agenda, um, time and willingness. Uh, meet with the building principal or designate any prior to the board ed meeting. And then to meet with students and listen to issues from the concern of the student body. Um, then there's the selection process.
What, what?
Nation is consists of two representatives with one being the alternate, the other being the mandatory. Selections will be made by the building principals at the end of each, uh, by the building principals at the end of each academic year. Um, each student will vote on two candidates. And all appointments shall require the final approval of the superintendent and Board of Education.
So, uh, I, I think my first thought.
It goes into terms of service, the status functions.
My first thought is that I, because this policy does not have corresponding regulations. I actually like, administratively, I like the idea of having this policy be somewhat more detailed as the West Orange policy is. So I, I, I want, I want to recommend a cross-referencing of the two. And I think this is, I, I flagged this one for bringing for a deeper dive. Um, and, and what I'll plan to do for our next work session is I will copy for you all the Strauss estimate policies with the corresponding West Orange policy, so you have them both side by side. But I just want to pose a question to the board on this one. Do, do you feel that, and obviously the, the, the West Orange policy indicates that the, the board and the superintendent have final approval. But do, do you feel that the board, um, you know, as these student, student liaisons are going to be kind of ex officio members of the board, if you will, that the board have a, a greater degree, degree of involvement in, um, the process of identifying the student liaisons?
I'd like to maybe see an interview process of all the candidates, um.
No, I think they've done a, am I on mute still?
No.
I think they've done an excellent job in selecting students to represent the board. The ones that I've seen and the ones that I've had the, you know, been fortunate enough to work with over the last year have been outstanding and, um, I, I don't know.
One, one comment, and I, I wrote a note here, I said, um, students on the spectrum should be allowed to serve. Um, and the GPA requirement, I think it excludes an important percentage of the student population. I know keeping in good standing, um, in, in student conduct, not just in academics, I think would help broaden the pool of people interested in participating, so.
Yeah, I mean, so I think, you know, this brings me into the question of, you know, we hold our athletes and our marching band and, and band members to a high standard. So we have A, the ASAP program and the B sat program. So we require our student athletes and our marching bands, color guard, um, members to all have a minimum GPA to be in good standing. So I, I wonder if, you know, that should apply to, um, other areas of, of the school. So for something like this where it is very, it's a public position, it's, um, as you, obviously we've all gone through, it's an elected position. So I, I guess I kind of see the student liaisons while absolutely have been marvelous and have done and brought to light a, a lot of great, um, topics and, and thoughts of the school district and, and students of the high school. You know, I just wonder if there is that next level that also needs to be brought in because if we're holding other members of the, the high school, uh, community to a higher standard, then I think we should be holding our, our student liaisons as well to that, to that level. And, and I think they do, don't get me wrong. I, I absolutely, um, think that they, they meet those requirements. But I just wonder if, you know, we're looking for diversity of thought, we're looking for a lot of, um, equity and opportunity. So Melinda, to your point, I think that makes sense, you know, about maybe, um, opening up that, but somewhere I think our administrative team, um, along with Dr. C's, uh, guidance can, can help direct us in, in that manner. But I, I would like to see maybe some sort of a lecture process or, or, uh, interview process um, to just ensure that we're, we're all students represented.
Maybe what I, maybe what I'll suggest on this one is maybe this is a good one for me to circle back with Mr. Moore. High school principal.
Yeah.
Maybe kind of gather some feedback from him, you know? How, how does he feel it's work? Does he feel as the building principal, there's any way that the, the nomination and selection process on the school level might be able to be improved? You know, maybe he feels in which ways in which that could potentially be improved. And, and also, has he ever even seen? And this is not a criticism of him, if he hasn't, but has he actually ever even seen the board policy? And even probably, maybe he has, maybe he hasn't, but, and have a, a kind of an interactive conversation with him about that. And, and when I bring it forth, at the next policy work session, I can speak to, um, you know, our conversation and what insights he may have had to, um, contribute.
That sounds good.
Okay.
Can I just offer one thought, uh, along with that, that it would be great to see what the criteria are for student selection. It's, you know, I feel like I'd have more of an interest in, in the board reviewing the criteria for selection than necessarily interviewing the students, which can be an intimidating thing. And not necessarily in one interview really allow us the opportunity to assess who would best be able to represent the student body.
Duly noted, Mr. Rothstein, that. And in the end, you know, as, as the policy, um, you know, kind of is, well, at least the West Orange policy, not, not the Strauss estimate one, is inclusive of criteria. You know, maybe, um, you know, after that conversation with Mr. Moore, that can be the focus of the, the deeper conversation at the next work session is, is, is there anything you maybe want to add to criteria? Um, that you think, you know, kind of, um, really speaks to the commonality in Mrs. Merklinger and Mrs. Huerta's point, which is the idea of ensuring that where it's opened up to, um, as, as broad a representation of our student body as possible. Okay, um, board committees. I think Mr. Alper's feedback on this one is he felt that the West Orange policy was superior. I, I could be more detailed.
Which one is this? I'm sorry.
This is zero, one, five, five, board committees.
I think Strauss estimate doesn't have as many committees listed as we do. I, I, I recall, I'm not looking at it, but I recall that's what it was.
So, right, so we have policy and public relations, but, um, are there, are there, those really are the only two committees, true committees, correct?
Right.
Sorry, can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Um, and the town liaison.
Negotiating?
Yeah, so, um, policy, public relations, negotiations.
Liaison.
And. And township liaison. Now.
Right, and then we added school, um, Essex County school boards.
What about legislative?
Legislation, yeah, legislative.
Now, now, were those, are those, those, those would be considered committees? Policy, public relations, negotiation, township liaison, uh, and New Jersey school boards. And, uh, legislative.
I didn't understand all of these as committees. I'm thinking of the ones where we assigned, um, uh, delegates and alternates.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I didn't really think of those so much as committees as just roles that a member of the, of the board is going to play.
Right, but that falls under, for West Orange's benefit, under committees.
Okay.
They're really liaisons, um, or delegates, but that's where it has been.
Now, just looking at the procedure there, the president shall board, appoint board members to serve a one-year term on the following. That, does that, does that capture the way in which this board does it?
Not at all. Yeah, with interest, people express interest and.
And then ultimately.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the West Orange policy says all standing committees shall be dissolved at the end of the board year. At the annual organizational meeting, they may be dissolved at any time by motion of the board. So it looks like a thing.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I mean, other than adding the, uh, the additional committees, you're, you're comfortable with that?
Are we? I'm fine.
I think I saw something, I can't, I don't, I'm trying to reference it, but I don't see it. It caught my attention, which is, West Orange is more specific. And add that committee member does not necessarily have to be on the board and can serve in an advisory capacity. I E, like the, um, vote that we just did with, uh, Mr. Alper to be.
That was in the West Orange policy?
Uh, I believe it was in the Strauss estimate policy that can be added if we want to keep the West Orange policy. But I can't find it on this, um, that's why I was trying to find the particular, let me see. Let me see, oh, committee, my, seven, five, commission. Invite persons whose knowledge or expertise may be useful to the committee.
Where do you see that?
It's the very last.
Paragraph in Strauss estimate's, um.
Oh, I see, yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
At the end. To the public or invite persons whose knowledge or expertise may be useful to the committee. So that one is not, that is not included in the West Orange policy. It doesn't specify that you have to be a board member to be on a committee.
Okay, well, that's good because. What you said it.
I mean, it falls under special.
Should we doubt this now or?
That's actually under the special committees piece of the West.
Oh, it is, okay.
Special committees.
Oh, does it? I, I didn't see it.
Okay.
Oh, special committee may be.
What number is that?
Well, but it doesn't say, so special committees may be created for special assignments. The same rules shall apply to special committees as applied to standing committees, except that they shall be dissolved upon completion of their assignment.
Yeah, and I think the intent I was so.
Different.
Okay, I took it to be the same.
That's the equivalent of an ad hoc committee. If we decided we wanted to look at transportation, um, then board members would volunteer to be on that committee, and then when their task is done, they're done.
Right.
So that, that's the equivalent of an ad hoc.
Right.
Uh, it does say it under other reasons. I, I apologize, the school ethics commission has celebrated on the topic of committee assignments on several occasions, particularly concerning assignments and the negotiations committee. Committee, consult your board attorney for the most current thinking on this subject.
Right.
And that's one of the things you learn in school boards when you take the negotiations workshop. So.
Is that something that we have to tie in, though?
I think would be useful, too.
The West Orange wording about the school ethics commission.
I'm sorry, I was, um, I was, uh, I was, yeah, I was, I was, I was, wasn't locked in on that. If you'll, just since I, I'm the, uh, the secretary here.
So it's, uh, oh, one, five, five, and the West Orange policy is nine, one, three, oh.
Right, so are we keeping the West Orange and adding or to the, from the Strauss estimate?
So we're keeping West Orange and we're adding Strauss estimate?
I'm not looking at that.
And, and does the West, and does the West Orange policy include those other committees?
Yes.
It does. Okay, so we're keeping.
That what you just read off?
Yeah, negotiation.
With the negotiation.
No, the actual list, it says established through action of the board, which, um, standing committee establishes, the board may authorize the establishment of standing committees. But nowhere does it list the specific ones that we have.
Okay.
All right, so, uh, so are we?
Do we want to keep it then that generic? So in case there's other ones? I would think, adding in the future that people want to add or take away, then we don't have to list them and then change the policy every time.
Just hit me with that West Orange policy number one more time.
Nine, one, three, oh.
So we're adding the final paragraph of the Strauss estimate policy to policy nine, one, three, oh, West Orange. Okay, got it. Okay. Next one I had was quorum. Anyone, um, anyone, uh, Mrs. Huerta, you, since you seem to have be dialed in on Mr. Alper's, um, feedback. Any note on what, what was for quorum?
He said, sure.
Oh, sure, okay. All right, so we're gonna.
I want to completely disagree with that comment.
Of course you do.
But the corresponding West Orange policy is nine, three, two, five, quorum.
Okay.
And I put, okay.
Okay, all right, so then we'll, we'll, this one will be, this one will go move forward for a, a second reading at the, uh, at the next meeting. Can conduct of, can conduct of board meeting, uh, zero, one, six, four.
The West Orange policy that corresponds to that is nine, three, two, two.
Any feedback on that?
What Mr. Ken Alper wrote down was, wait one second, I'm sorry, I lost it. Uh, one, six, four, he wrote, this says Robert's rules of order will govern, which isn't the case here. Also spec, specifies the order of business, which I don't think it should.
Okay, so give me, give me that, um, that, the, the West Orange policy.
Nine, three, two, two.
Nine, three, two, two?
Nine, three, two, two, yep.
I'm gonna move that forward.
Yeah, our West Orange one is much more descriptive about public and executive sessions.
I see. I'm going to table this one and move that forward to the next work session for a deeper dive and a side-by-side comparison. Okay. Zero, one, six, seven, public participation in board meetings.
So that's also in the same policy, the same West Orange policy, nine, three, two, two. Public participation is, uh, its own.
It's its own, okay.
It's hu, header under, under that one.
So maybe, maybe we add that to the same conversation.
This, I noted agenda sample, West Orange has electronic communication piece. The Strauss estimate does not.
For zero, one, six, seven?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one, sorry. I was looking.
No, it, there is, in the West, in the, in the West Orange policy, we have electronic communication among board members.
So that's also zero, nine, three, two.
Under public participation.
So that.
You're all right, you were wrong, you're all right, it's here.
So that will be, that'll be part of the same side-by-side at the next, uh.
Only thing that I think is different, though, I don't think it relates to, I don't know if it's its own policy with Strauss estimate. Because this, um, oh, one, six, seven is public participation in board meetings, which looks like it goes over how we expect the public and, and the rules of engagement, I'll say. The electron, under this West Orange policy, which has public and executive sessions. I think the, while it's here, it's a kind of communication. It's among board members and it's the expectations about like messaging and emails, attachments, um.
There is a, there is a Strauss estimate policy, zero, one, six, nine, that covers board member use of electronic mail and internet.
Right.
Yeah.
So I don't think that's part of this one, so like, I think the West Orange one has to be separated, like, these pieces have to be separated out.
Would it, would it, uh, Mr. Rothstein, in terms of the discussion of this bundle of policies, would it, the policy you just mentioned, zero, one?
Six, nine.
That's a, that's a Strauss estimate policy?
Strauss estimate policy, yeah.
Okay, so then what I'll do is.
And we actually adopted it already.
Zero, one, six, seven?
Zero, one, six, nine. So what I'll do is I'll bring, when we, for the next meeting, we'll, we'll do a. Zero one six nine, so what I'll do is I'll bring, when we, for the next meeting, we'll, we'll do a side-by-side of zero one six four, zero one six seven, zero one six nine. And the West Orange policy and just kind of tease out, you know, where there's overlap and what we may want to keep and so on and so forth. Organizational chart is easy enough, I just need to insert the most recent. Org chart and send that to Strauss S M A for them to populate this, that's easy enough.
Uh, Dr. Kascón, I had asked about adding students, I don't recall what you said, I mean, teachers on the bottom of the org chart.
What number are we on, policy number?
We're on a one 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 zero uh organizational chart.
Oh, okay, and identification?
No. It's um, it's not on the bylaw, it's the first policy, it's.
Oh, okay, 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 sorry.
That's okay. Yeah, it's not listed on this. It's easy to do.
So that, so that then is gonna, so so if we add, if we add, um, no, I would, I would argue that it would be. We might want to make it slightly more generic and call it certificated staff. Because.
That's fine.
Right? And that'll require us doing a re-adoption of the org chart after it's edited, which will slow this down a little bit, but. It's okay. Re-adopt. Org chart. Okay. Okay, the next one I have is homework. Who had, who had the two thousand series?
I did.
Okay. I'm I'm imagining that you might have flagged this because you felt like this might be one where we might want to.
I wanted the principals or some one else to take a look at it.
Yep.
Here to say you wanted them to do a little homework?
A little homework, exactly.
Done, take care of that.
That has quite a few West Orange policies, is that right?
Yeah, do you want to?
Three three oh, oh, no, that's not on here.
One five four. Six, two, three, three, oh, we're on, right, so the West Orange policy is six one five four.
Six one five four?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Okay, um. Two, three, six, three, uh, student use of privately-owned technology. Is that another one you wanted administrative review on or?
Yeah, I don't have that on my list, is that in uh?
The three six.
Column is that on, two, three, six, three.
Two, two, three, six, three. The West Orange policy number for that one is five one three one point two.
And did I skip over that one, maybe I did, I don't know. I don't have it listed.
Is uh, is the, the board member feedback noted?
It says check with Phil S.
Oh, two, three, yes. I didn't skip it.
Give me the, I'm sorry, just give me the.
Uh, yeah, okay, two, three, six, three.
Two, three, six, three, that's a Phil Santiago.
Right, and it's five one three one point two.
Wait a second, five one.
Three one point two.
It is the, the West Orange?
Yes.
Five one three one point two. Point two. Okay, yeah, the school and facility names, that was one that we had, that was one we had started to talk about. Remember, we, the last meeting, we had kind of, I had kind of brought the um. The, the Pasek policy, just as like an example of a more, a more detailed policy. That, that's one I think that.
Sorry, which number is that?
I'm sorry, seven, seven, two, uh, I don't know why I'm, I'm out of order here, seven, two, five, hang on a second. Put that on the bottom.
It's very last page.
We went from two to seven.
Sorry about that, uh, three, one, four, six, conduct of reduction force, I guess that would, maybe that was a Joe V or.
Three, one, four, six. Yes, um, Dr. Joe. Four, six. Three, one, four, six. You have the West Orange number, you got that?
Four, one, one.
Four, one, one, seven, point four.
Point four.
Four, one, one, seven, point four.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I think this one, there was a contradiction between the Strauss S M A and, no, the West Orange, I said Washington, sorry.
And conduct and reduction and force.
Right, a bit of a contradiction, are tenured personnel able to be fired, because I think there was a.
Well, that's why Dr. Joe's gonna review that one.
Right, that was a contradiction, right, okay.
Yeah, we put it right in his capable hands.
We, we, we go, we, we call him Dr. V, just to avoid any confusion.
Who's the other Dr. Joe?
There's only one other Dr. Joe.
Well, I know, but she's not at STO.
All right, um. Now, if unless I'm going out of order here, I have five one, five one 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 eligibility of resident non-re. This is one where just felt like we wanted to take a deep dive into it, is that? And this is, this is a long pause, twenty pages.
Yeah.
What's this, what's the um, the West Orange?
Five.
The West Orange.
What is it?
Five, one, one.
Five, one, one, eight. This is one I'm gonna put on for review at our next, this is one where I think it's, and this is one where I would ask. And what I'll do is, is once we have our next policy work session scheduled, um, I'll provide the side-by-sides in advance. So that you, in advance of the meeting, can have an opportunity of read, reading them both side-by-side and come with kind of suggestions and conversation points, but this is one we'll put on for the next. Work session, let's see, S C, five, one, one, one. W O. I'll also have registration office take a look at this as well. Eligibility. Did anybody, just had anybody reviewed it at all and had any, any questions?
I had flagged it because of our West Orange policy. And I thought it just required a little bit more in-depth look in the side-by-side comparison.
Yeah, I, I think I recall that the, the West Orange policy. If I'm mistaken, um, might have required a piece of information. Which, which senses is actually against statute to request the citizenship reform, right?
Yeah, we struck that.
Yeah. But, but let's um. Let's put that on the docket for a deep dive next session.
And that's one of our leftover mandated ones.
One of our, yeah, yep. Late arrival. That's a, that's a. That's a um regulation, huh? Is that the regulation that? Five, two, regulation five, two, three, zero, that corresponds with the tardiness policy?
That's the uh.
Are you asking whether there is a regulation?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm seeing tardiness is five, two, four, zero. And then I'm seeing that the, I have a regulation here, which is five, two, three, zero, which is late arrival and early dismissal.
Yeah, so our West Orange policy is very extensive. And I, that's why I had asked to pull it so we could do a kind of a side-by-side comparison.
For tardiness?
Um, so we have everything all in one.
What is that?
It's attendance, absences, and excuses, five, one, one, three, point zero, zero. So that's our policy.
Five, one, one, three, point.
Zero, zero.
Zero, zero. W O. And five, two, four, oh. Mr. Rothstein, you're, you're, you're good at, at, at picking up the uh, when there's like, when a, when a bundled West Orange policy. Threads out to various Strauss S M As. Are there other Strauss S M A policies that are tangent to this five, two, four, oh tardiness?
Um, give me one second here.
Okay.
There's a mention of tardiness in disaffected students, but I don't think that's really consequential. It seems like this is really the only one, fifty, two, forty is the only mention of, a significant mention of tardiness.
Okay.
Of the Strauss S M A policies.
Okie dokie.
Now, what is, I, I think you already mentioned this, but what's interesting is in the regulation for fifty, two, thirty.
Yeah.
Late arrival and early dismissal, there's several mentions of tardiness.
Yeah, so I, and it looks like a lot of the stuff that's in the West Orange policy is in the regulation for fifty, two, thirty as well.
All right, so.
It's just a matter of deciphering what goes where.
Yeah, we'll te, we'll tease it out, we'll side, side-by-side them and see where, where it lies. I'm thinking this student use of vehicle on school grounds was a high school administrator review.
Yeah, I, I called that one out, um, just, uh, I, I don't know what the regulations are that we currently follow, and so I wasn't aware of whether the pol, this Strauss S M A policy aligned to what we uh, to what we do.
Got it. So, uh, you know, again, just, and I think, you know, seven, two, five, zero, I, I think it's a. I think you could almost have a work session dedicated exclusively just to this policy. You know. Obviously, it, it, the board wa, board member, board welcomes suggestions of members of the community in the name of school buildings, facilities, and may appoint a committee of interested. Persons to conduct appropriate studies and make right. Amy School, the board shall strive to honor the traditions and high ideals of this district and the community it serves. I, I think that the, the one question mark, you know, that I think the board talked about last time was, is do you, some policies. You know, indicate that it can only be posthumous? You know, um. But, you know.
That's one school of thought, yeah, I mean, I brought that up as, you know, one way to look at it. Mostly for legal protection, if some, somebody's, you know, falls from grace after you've named a building, that's usually why it's done, but it's not always. You know. In uh, in fundraising circles, there's plenty of people who are happy to have their name on a building.
Right. You know, what, what, do we have a policy for this, Mrs. Merklinger?
We do, I just can't find it at the moment.
Okay.
I didn't note one, I, I didn't see one.
It's tied, it's.
Oh, yes.
Another one, but I can't think of, I can't find the number off the top of my head.
I thought I had seen something, it's.
I didn't see anything, so I don't know, oh, when I looked in, when I tried to do a keyword search, I didn't, nothing popped up for me. And in the notation with the working audit. Uh, I didn't see any reference to a West Orange policy that existed for this.
Yeah, I believe we started that discussion.
Yeah. Well, uh, you know, that, that in that case, you know, what, what I might, what I might suggest for this one, if there doesn't exist a West Orange policy, is you may just want to get this one adopted ASAP, so you have something. Because there's nothing, and then come back to it, that might be one you want to put on the docket early after the manual is adopted. To, you know, to, to kind of tease out and to look at more specifically, at least get something on the books. Was that on, was seven, two, five, oh, on for a first reading tonight?
Yes, I believe so.
Ms. Trixell, I'm sorry, can we just have uh your microphone put towards your mouth? You had raised it to drink some water.
It is on.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, Mrs. Gravtisa, I'm starting to think you just like to tell people what to do.
Hey.
I think that's the, that's the take, the takeaway here after six months of doing, no, I'm kidding.
It just shows you that I'm paying attention, so that's a good thing.
Mrs. Huerta, was it on?
Yes, it is, yeah.
So, I mean, is the board comfortable with moving this forward for an adoption, just so we have something on the books and then we can come back to it?
Yeah.
Because it does provide some structure, anyway.
Do we want to um honor anybody by naming that policy after them?
I, I, it's the will of the board, I.
Gary, if you insist, I'll volunteer.
I think that's a great idea.
Okay, good. All right, well, that, that was, um, those were all the ones that um. I had flagged, um, just, just to kind of recap here from my, you know, just what I've done here, I, I've, I've noted fourteen policies. Um, and their West Orange counterparts, which will represent kind of the, 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 the primary work. For um, our next policy work session. And um, I've made note of any policies that need further review and by whom. And what policies we're comfortable moving forward on the twenty-fifth or a second reading and adoption.
Right, thank you, Dr. Kascón, and I would just suggest that our committee touch base with you before our next meeting, just so that. You're, it's not all on you, you, you've done a yeoman's job of pulling this together, so. Yay, thank you.
Uh, yes, thank you, and yes, definitely will, uh, I know Cheryl, I, I'm sure you're on board, we'll, uh, we'll dig in and, and help get this prepared for our next meeting.
Absolutely.
It, it's been, Mr. Trixell, it's been, it's been a great team effort, I mean, you know, I've, you know, I've. Kind of maybe the glue a little bit, but everyone's really pitched in, I mean, I want to thank the board, the board, you know, the, the, the review of the policies and the identification of feedback has really. Fallen almost exclusively to the board up to this point, so I'd like to thank the board as well, because. It's a massive task and we're doing it diligently and it takes time, but we're, we're making progress.
I just wanted to ask a question uh, about process moving forward, in the cases where we're making um, any kind of significant changes to the Strauss S M A policies. Or where we're opting to primarily uh go with the existing West Orange policies instead. When Strauss S M A issues updates. I, I would imagine that the process at that time would be just to take a look at the update. Recognize that we've got a big discrepancy, remind ourselves the reasons that we went with what we went with and whether it's still relevant. But, yeah, we, we don't need to keep any specific track of where we're favoring West Orange policies, we'll just handle that on a case-by-case basis.
Exactly, and, and, and that's, you know, and, and really, um, once the. What, once the policy manual is fully updated, you know, that really becomes the primary, one of the primary functions of the policy committee is to review those Strauss S M A policy updates. And then to address those um through work sessions and, and board agendas to do the necessary updates.
That's great, yeah, these work sessions will be a lot easier when we're dealing with a couple of policies instead of uh.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Just one more sweep, um, we're all good for our policy work for tonight, yes, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So that, very, very good, so, yes.
While we had everyone here, did we want to maybe try and identify a potential date for a next meeting or?
Oh.
A next policy meeting?
Yes, I suppose we can do that.
And I'm open tomorrow.
And only tomorrow.
Let's see here.
By tomorrow, do you mean like right now, in a couple of hours?
Yeah. Well, we have, um, we have, of course, we have the, the, the public meeting on the twenty-fifth. Um, I'm, my sense is you, you may wish the board would wish to have another work session within the month of January, I'm thinking, or, I don't know. Maybe the first week in February?
Uh, yeah, when is our? If February, yeah.
Okay. Well, I, I would say, um. You know, uh, how, how might Wednesday, the third work? Tuesday, the second, I mean, any day, I'm good any day that week, uh, Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday all work for me, so.
The third is fine.
Yeah, the third looks all right for me.
That's for a policy, right?
Yes.
Mrs. Merklinger? So February third and dude, we and we like the seven o'clock start time?
Yes.
That works.
Okay, that's actually good because it gives it gives me a little runway to to kind of get some of the stuff turned around. So.
Great. All right. Anything else? Anyone?
So I just want to confirm the next public meeting is the twenty-fifth of January.
All right, moving right along. We are up to petitions and hearings of citizens. And so, Ms. Graff Tisa, thank you, and I know you will go over the protocol. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Yes. Now is the time for those in the audience who wish to speak on any then they'd like to talk about. Timer is on the screen. If you are one of our call in attendees, it is star nine. You only have to press it once. And everyone else is going to use the raise your hand button at the bottom of your screen. It does put you in a queue, so the quicker you push it, the quicker you get in the queue. And we asked that if you do plan to speak to push it now, so we have an idea of how many people we have lined up. So we are also going to ask you to state your name and address for the record. So Deb Cohen, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Deb Cohen, West Orange High School. My current Facebook status: overwhelmed, frustrated, stressed, exhausted. I'm just putting this out there in the universe so that other teachers who feel the same know that they are not alone. Why do I share this? Because while there is much talk about the mental health of students, I believe that it is also important to consider the mental health of staff. We have been teaching remotely for almost a year now, reinventing our curricula, adapting to new ways of teaching, modifying lessons for special needs students and trying to keep collaboration and hands-on activities learning possible via Zoom, Google meets and our Google classrooms. Is it perfect? No. Are our students learning? Absolutely. And it is important to note they are learning more than just academically. They are learning how to adapt, persevere, and deal with adversity in a way no one could have predicted. In no small way, they are learning through the modeling of the teachers. The hybrid model makes it more complicated. This is not to say it can't work. We will make it work because that is what we do as teachers. With the hybrid model from K through twelve, some students will be in the classroom and others on Zoom. Both sets of students will need to be engaged in learning. Students in the classroom may understandably want school to look and feel normal, and we will do the best we can to have them experience school that way in a safe manner. We will engage students in the classroom while we simultaneously engage students on Zoom, making sure that students attending remotely are able to ask questions and check for their understanding of the material. As a result, we may need to plan two ways of teaching the same lesson in order to reach all our students. This is what we do, and we will do our best whether we are in the hybrid model or stay virtual. Please understand the stress of the situation on the teachers. We have our own families, our own situations, good, bad, and complicated, and are working more hours than we thought possible. At the high school level, the administration has been nothing but supportive from supervisors, vice principals, and our principal. They are trying to help us as best they can. We will do all this because we care and love our students and our profession. We don't want to burn out, but we are exhausted, overwhelmed, stressed, and frustrated. Our mental health needs to be taken into consideration so that we can continue to give our students the best education we possibly can, no matter how much we are teaching the material. Please take this into consideration with the decision to move on with hybrid. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jay Wecht. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
My name is Jay Wecht, English teacher at Roosevelt Middle School for over twenty-five years. I add that part about how long I've been teaching in the district because when I started, there was no such thing as a cell phone, and there was only one computer in my entire building. Oh, there was one more thing that didn't exist in nineteen ninety-five. Besides, of course, every single child who presently attends the West Orange Public Schools, because none of them were even born when I started teaching at Roosevelt. And that would be a lockdown drill. They hadn't been created or needed. Now, though, we practice as if there's a clear and present danger in the building at least once a month. I'm instructed at all costs, make sure I lock my door, be certain the kids are completely silent, and get the children in the corner of the room where they can't be seen. I'm told we don't want any harm coming to the kids and we don't want any harm coming to you. So I have to inquire, why are my colleagues and I being instructed to let the shooter into the building now? I can appreciate that there are some parents who would like to have their children back into their classrooms. I can appreciate that because I used to be one of them. My son's public high school, not even ten miles from our high school here, was also closed in September and fully remote. When they finally opened up over two months later, my son was one of the kids who went to his classes. I remember distinctly it was a Thursday. He came home almost in tears, telling my wife and me that he was one of the most two kids in each of his classes, sitting more than six feet apart, wearing masks just like all his teachers were, and he felt the entire time unsafe and like he was being punished. Needless to say, he didn't return the next day, but neither did any of the children at his high school after the second day. Five of his friends tested positive for COVID and the school went back to fully remote. Subsequently, the school has reopened hybrid, closed due to COVID, reopened, closed, reopened, and last Saturday, we were informed that it is now closed again due to COVID. We all long for the time to go back to normal. That time is not now. After I spoke last meeting, my name was broadcasted on a list of all the teachers who spoke against reopening. I know who generated the list and many of the members of the group to whom that list was sent. I guess it was put there to intimidate and shame those of us who spoke. It did not have that effect. Instead, I wear the fact that my name topped that list as a badge of honor because when the smoke finally clears and it is safe for the kids and the teachers to return to our buildings, I will be on the right side of this tragic story that we're all writing together. So if another list is being compiled now, it is W E C H T, the same Roosevelt Middle School teacher who has proudly taught over two thousand West Orange children and would love to be around to teach another two thousand. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jesse Aporta. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen.
Dr. Kascana and board members, I really can't thank you enough for the support that you've shown over the past several months. But I do ask that you consider and truly consider the health and safety, not just of the teachers, but of of the entire community. And I do want to set the record straight. Dr. Kascana, in your email, you put into words what I believe is a sentiment expressed multiple times by several members of the community and their comments. Teachers are not acting out of fear. We are acting out of love and compassion and true concern for this community. You have made the hard decisions to keep schools closed, to keep many residents upset, the ones that we hear vocally in opposition to remaining virtual. But the reason we have a lower community spread is because you have made that tough decision along the way. You have added and contributed to saving lives in this district. Just today, another person in West Orange died. I just ask that in opening the buildings, that you fully weigh as a board, as a superintendent, you fully weigh the absolute plausibility that family members of students will get sick, could possibly lose their lives, all because we want to satiate a few loud parents who want to use the schools as childcare. Thank you.
Jesse, can we just have your name for the record? I know you're like your title.
Carter Road. I'm a teacher at West Orange High School, and I graduated in two thousand one.
Thanks. Susan Pasquale, if you can follow the prompt. Okay, Susan, you're on a older version of Zoom. I'm going to bring you over and then turn off your video if you can just don't touch anything on your screen. And we'll just have the board just give me one moment and I will turn off her camera as we do for everyone else. And there you are. Okay, great. Okay, Susan, if you can unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect. My name is Susan Pasquale, twenty-two Overlook Avenue. I'm here tonight not only as a parent, a taxpayer, a longtime resident, and an employee of the West Orange Board of Education. I have also served on many PTAs during my years as my children attend the West Orange schools. I'm here tonight on behalf of all the teachers in the school district. It saddens me to see so many teachers speaking out and even the ones who are afraid to speak out in regards to the fear of them returning. My aunt works in the Wayne District and took early retirement. The other two women in our office recently have died of COVID. They both were under sixty-five. I'm asking you, please, is there any way that you can hold off and get all the staff members vaccinated before returning? I've also reached out to Governor Murphy's office today to ask to extend the vaccines to be available for these teachers who are also essential. I am asking once again the board members and the superintendent to please reconsider the return of January nineteenth until it is safe and all these teachers and staffs have been vaccinated. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Just stay with me for one second and I'll bring you back over. Next, we have Jennifer Studniggy. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hello.
Hi.
How are you this evening? Hi, Jennifer Studnig, Jennifer Madla Studniggy, district teacher for nineteen years. I just want to thank the board and Dr. Kascana and everyone here for taking the time out tonight out of your schedules to be here. At our last board meeting, there was a clear divide between those who want to return, those who want children to return to schools and those who feel it is unsafe to return. However, what I couldn't help but notice were the reasons. There were some who provided valid arguments that students need to return to improve their socialization or because they are just better in-person learners who will have a better chance of success. But there were others who made statements expressing the privileges their children had, yet questioning why our students deserve less than these white Essex County districts because we have more black and brown students, or accusations against teachers who are intentionally stolen to avoid going back. And this is when the disconnect became clear. Regardless of what has been said, remaining virtual has everything to do with the safety of the greater good, not because we as teachers don't want to go. So mark that on your bingo board. To make the assertion that our town and our teachers feel our students deserve less because we have more black and brown students was as insulting as it was untrue. As the CDC does inform us that black Americans were thirty-seven percent more likely to die than whites. Hispanics were sixteen percent more likely to die. Asians with the highest rate were fifty-three percent more likely to die. In order to understand why so many fear to return to schools, the evidence doesn't exactly favor a good number of us. As this debate continues, we need to see how it impacts the entire community. Those will be in the building and those who won't, not just those who make the most noise. Since it is clear the decision has already been made up to return to schools, I do have a few questions that need clarifying. One, what is the percentage of students in the district who have opted to remain full virtual versus the number that have chosen hybrid? This will give us a clear picture to show the percentage of the population who feel it is safe to return to the buildings. Two, considering we as teachers are expected to report daily to our buildings, will we also be expected to remain in our buildings when we are not instructing in order to at least provide a break to take shelter from the exposure? Three, when teachers begin to call out sick because they have been exposed to COVID or just positive for COVID or have to take emergency days because their children or children, their child or children contracted COVID, now that they are back in schools and there aren't enough subs to cover, will teachers be expected to cover classes and risk further exposure? Four, when those students who have sick teachers or teachers have to take consecutive days off due to the illness of a family member, how will instruction be delivered during those days? And should there be interrupted instructional days, do you think learning will be stunted? After all, substitutes should not be expected to teach content which they are not familiar. Five, what if classes or schools are forced to quarantine over and over again due to consecutive breakouts? Is it fair to ask students and teachers to constantly fear they have contracted COVID or put them through this mental anxiety at the worry of possibly being exposed? Six, we understand the protocol when students inform us they feel sick in class, but what do we do if students have a panic attack or become fearful throughout the day? Seven, what is the protocol if we as teachers become anxious or nervous and need to leave the classroom? During today's state address, Governor Murphy expressed that he feared the variant is already in New Jersey due to the rapid increase of cases. Today was the highest of almost seven thousand cases. And with the numerous towns announcing their decision to stay virtual, along with a message from local private school, a local private school in West Orange calling for a pivot to return to virtual for a couple of weeks because based on the Department of Health's recommendation, the timing of our return couldn't be more impeccable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. David Leach, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, I'm David Leach, the computer science teacher at West Orange High School. And I want to start by saying, last week, it was mentioned that the county numbers I had were irrelevant because West Orange is outperforming it. So what I did was I took the daily case data that Mayor Parisi releases each day and compared it to the Essex County numbers that are from the New Jersey Department of Health. And the data is volatile, but but when you trend it, you know, since we started tracking back in November, West Orange has seen a twenty-one percent increase in new daily cases. And the county has only seen thirteen, which means the county is actually doing better. And also, I want to mention that two of the highest days for new cases were January seventh and January eighth, which were within the week from now. And one of the days, January seventh, was tied for highest. So I did this in Excel, and if anyone listening wants a copy, you could get my email. It's on the, it's on the school site. I also want to talk about like positivity real quick because it's it's a ratio. And I mean, ultimately, if you don't know the context of positivity, positivity, like, like the positives could be going down or testing could be going up. And if you don't know the reason behind it, it's not that great of a metric. But the bottom line is if we compare November to now, I'm pretty confident that there's no way science or data would support opening up then versus now. And if we're insisting on going back to school, I completely understand, but like, I want to know if it's going to be based on positivity, then my first question is, what is the positivity rate required for us to go fully remote? So in addition, like, I know I'm a high school teacher and, you know, I'm in kind of a a different world than elementary school teachers, but but my my wife's two little cousins, they're one and three. They recently tested positive for COVID and, you know, we really can't believe it. But the scariest thing I heard their mom say was they'll get through it, but they're praying that they can taste again. And, you know, that kind of floored me. You know, you think of everything as life and death, but you forget about the possibility of like permanent taste loss or quality of life changes. So so if parents are listening, please don't gamble the long-term health of your kids for things like socialization and FaceTime. It's really not worth it. We will get them caught up. And lastly, you know, I know I'm trying to appeal to your logic and your hearts and and ultimately, I hope I can convince you, but if I can't convince you that this is a less than optimal path that we're doing, I was wondering if maybe I could propose a compromise, like maybe if we go, you know, hybrid for four weeks and then we, the following four weeks, we go fully remote and then we at least assess and figure out if going back is hurting people. You know, that way we check ourselves and make sure we're doing the right thing. And then, you know, that way we're also sure that the wrong thing doesn't become the status quo. Anyway, that's my proposal. I'm wondering what you think. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Patty Rudy. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, Patricia Rudy, Kelly Elementary School teacher. Let's take a minute to think about what we know. Since the Board of Ed meeting last week, the number of reported cases in West Orange have been nineteen, twenty-six, thirty-four, twenty-three, twenty, and today, thirty-one cases. Those numbers are clearly not decreasing. As I stated last week, all days included school age children. Now imagine if we were hybrid, because I'm sure these numbers will stay the same. Those children could have come to school and infected others. Let's also imagine a hybrid school day. Nothing like we've ever pictured, not even when I went to the West Orange schools as a child. There will be no circle time, no reading groups at the back table, no hugs, no high fives, no playtime, no snack time, no partner activities with shared materials. All happening in cold classrooms because the windows will be opened to increase fresh air circulation. There will also be days a teacher cannot report and a substitute is put in the child's classroom while students sit there in the classroom with a mask on, completing asynchronous assignments, just like Fridays. This may happen even for two weeks if the teacher becomes ill. Let's not forget that at any given time, the good old snow day call will now be the COVID call. Were you here effective immediately? Schools are closed for two weeks. And now parents and teachers, parents, teachers, and child routines are disrupted again. Structure is gone. Fear is in. Fear is in place. Who can learn? Who can teach? Now let's imagine staying virtual. Routine has been set. We continue to follow what we've been doing and know best. No shutdowns, no quarantines, no fear, no contact tracing phone calls. Instruction will carry on, substitutes not needed. Most importantly, there will be no risk to staff and students becoming ill or even worse, no longer with us. I know you want so badly to go back in person, so do I, but it's not safe. You may feel guilty now for staying virtual a little longer, but think of the heavy hearts we will all feel. When staff, students, family members become ill? Or even worse, no longer with us. This could all be prevented by being patient. Other districts have continued to stay virtual, so can we. Hillside has also decided to stay safe and stay virtual. The virus is raging around the country, around the state. Six thousand nine hundred twenty-two cases reported in New Jersey today. Do not let the virus rage through our schools. Do not let it cause fear in the students? And the teachers, the staff, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Paul. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Okay, Jennifer Paul, virtual, excuse me, veteran teacher, West Orange. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I'm currently teaching a primary grade at an elementary level. I went to these schools, I graduated from these schools, I've dedicated my life to these schools. I love West Orange and its fabulous schools, students and community members. Good evening, Dr. Cascone and Board of Ed members. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak tonight. I would like to speak to any parents who are still out there listening for just a minute or two. As a primary grade elementary teacher, I want nothing more than to physically be in my classroom with my students doing what I love to do. There is nothing more rewarding than seeing that aha moment on a child's face when she finally understands the math concept we're learning? Or when he uses his phonics skills to sound out a word all on his own? That is best done in the classroom and rewarded with a high five or fist bump. We all know that. But I would like to speak about what it will actually look like when our youngest learners return to our buildings in just a few days. Students will not be able to sit on the rug? Next to their need any partner to turn and talk, to share their thinking with a buddy or to partner read because it will not be safe. Students will not be working in cooperative learning groups to complete activities together because it will not be safe. Students will not play math card games and other games that require shared manipulatives because it will not be safe. Students will not be chatting with friends during snack time. There will be no snack time in school because it will not be safe. Teachers will not be able to guide our youngest learners hand over hand as we always have before because it will not be safe. Reading and writing conferencing won't happen with the teacher sitting beside the student because it will not be safe. The brain breaks that students have enjoyed as quick little dance parties while we have taught virtually will change. Instead of those in class, maybe able, those in class may be able to stand and stretch, but not move around the room and dance freely. Those at home will still have their party? But we can't let it happen in class because it would not be safe. In the classroom, students will remain at their seats. They will be seated at least six feet from each other and the teacher. Students will not be able to walk around the room. They will be masked. Teachers will be masked and wearing face shields. Students will have their belongings right at their seats, not in lockers or cubbies. Students will continue to work on computers. Teacher's time and attention will be split between students who are in person and those who are virtual. There will be no assemblies, there will be no high fives or fist bumps, there will be no hugs. This is also very sad, but because of the lethal dangers, so very necessary. School safety always comes first and it always will. As parents, you entrust what is truly most precious to you, your children, to us, the teachers every day. It is our duty to keep them safe for you while we educate them. Please understand that to keep them safe in school now will look and feel very different than before. I wish it were otherwise, but in some day it will be, but not today. For now, even together, we will be so very distant. I cannot wait to see my students in my classroom. But if we go back now, sadly, my students not see me smiling at that aha moment? Because it would not be safe. I will be smiling at those lovely children, but they won't see it because my smile will be hidden behind a mask. It will not be safe for any of us to teach otherwise. At least on Zoom, none of us need to wear a mask and smiles at aha moments can be shared freely. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Zarina Yasees. I apologize. Zarina, you have a older version of Zoom. I'm going to be promoting you to a panelist. Don't do anything to your computer. One moment as she comes over. Okay, I'm just going to stop your video here. Okay. Anton, are you there?
Uh, yes.
Great, thank you. Name and address for the record, please.
Um, Zarina Yasees, Spring Hill Drive. I'm a junior attending West Orange High School and I wanted to voice my concerns regarding transition from virtual to hybrid school. I feel that this transition has such a high risk with very little reward. Everyone I know desperately wants normalcy. However, risking the health of wary teachers and students is not going to achieve that goal. It's only going to create a tide of paranoia, fear and discomfort. I mean, we shut down schools in March because roughly five thousand people had passed through to COVID. Although now we have just surpassed over three hundred eighty thousand COVID-related deaths. I feel like when you're attempting to execute such a large plan, you have to remember that COVID has only worsened over the past few months? And consult the people that are actually working in these conditions. The people that are returning to school have not yet been administered the COVID nineteen vaccine. So why after all of these months of success would we return when we could quote unquote sacrifice a few more months of virtual school? And wait until we're distributing the vaccine? In this town, there are many people who live in two-family households with many residents. So if someone were to be infected, it would affect more than just a few people, but all of those who reside within the household and who they interact with. We also have to think about teachers who do not have the option to opt out of in-person school. They could very well be taking care of immune compromised relatives at home and should not have to worry about choosing between their health and their employment status. In neighboring districts, schools have been frequently closing due to mass spreading of COVID infections. Why would we want to enable the opportunity for COVID to spread in West Orange? We have been working virtually for the past five consecutive months and I think we've acclimated to this new form of school very well. Do you think the district is prepared to create a safe environment for all faculty and the student body? Because other schools have done the exact same thing that we have planned to implement, like cohorts, masks, no eating, but they're still shutting down. Thank you.
Thank you. I just don't touch anything under screen. I'll put you back over in one moment. Next, we have Danielle Sacola. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Good evening. My name is Danielle Sacola and I'm an elementary school teacher in the West Orange District for over the last fifteen years. I want to start by thanking the Board of Education, our administrators? And our family members and the families of our students for supporting us and keeping us safe. I do want to mention that I miss my students. I miss their smiles. I miss their hugs. I miss their high fives, their morning greetings. I miss their big smiles when they finally crush that big lesson that they got or they've been working so hard on in my class. I miss dancing out of our classroom at dismissal with a warm goodbye and a high five, see you tomorrow. I want to be back just as my colleagues do. But we should all understand what hybrid is going to look like. I've listened to parents express their child's needs for socialization. And I, as a parent of a specialized student and a general ed student, agree. My children do need socialization, but they're not going to get in the hybrid model. There will be no socialization. Students will be distanced with masks. Yes, in K to two, we will have second, a second support in our room. However, they're only there for some of the time. And when it's in hybrid, they'll be monitoring the Zoom calls. Who's coming in? Who has the? Who's having technical issues? There are also our regular drills that we have. They need to take place such as fire drills, shelter in place, evacuation drills, lockdown drills. Normally they're two a month. With this model, they'll be two a month per cohort. That equals four. That's a huge distraction during a very shortened day. The Zoom students will have to mute until we return. Also, there is no recess, there's no social interaction. That magical safe fun place will be very different than any of us are used to. Our attention will be split between Zoom students and our live students. This causing more distractions to everyone, including our students. Hybrid is happening in other districts. And like anything else, people have different opinions and different views on its worth and its success. Which is our right and our opinion, we're all entitled to it. But at this point, I'm stating my opinion based on conversations with teachers and parents? From other districts that are in hybrid. I want my students back. We all do. We want to give them the safe environment they deserve and the safe environment they know and they're familiar with. But the hybrid model will demonstrate a very different look for them, something very unfamiliar. I will always smile with my students. I will always show best practice, teach and love them because that's what I've chosen to do. This is my passion. This is what I've done for over fifteen years. It will not look the same. It will be very different, especially for our students. This is not something anybody is used to. We are all going through this together. I hope that we can come together, find a compromise and do what's right for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kimberly Buckley. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen.
Hello, good evening. Kimberly Buckley. I live at ten Penbridge Road. I would like to begin by thanking Dr. C and the Board of Education? For providing a forum in which all stakeholders feel comfortable speaking? And free from intimidation should they exercise their right to do so. Tonight, I'm sharing my concern as an educator, a mother, a wife and a community taxpayer. How can we justify opening our doors based on the only weekly positivity rate below ten percent? Our own township indicated last week's rate of eight point zero two was not reflective of the trend in West Orange. Looking back to November ninth, November eleventh had a rate of fourteen point seven percent. November eighteenth, fifteen point one seven. November twenty-sixth, sixteen point five. November third, ten point three. December seventeenth, fourteen point one. And December thirty-first, thirteen point one. Not one single week met our goal of reaching and sustaining a rate below ten percent. Cases are not trending downward, nor are we anywhere near the town's goal of less than one hundred cases per week. Since last Friday, we've had over one hundred and fifty new cases. And on Monday, we sadly lost a fifty-four-year-old member of this community. At the high school, we have almost twelve hundred students opting out of in-person instruction. These factors should steer our decision-making. We have an obligation to protect our students, our faculty and our community at large. We cannot and should not allow a small yet very vocal minority to determine our collective path forward. As Bogota Superintendent said, no one wants to be the first school where somebody gets really sick. My question is, is that the honor we're seeking? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Rachel Goodman. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen.
Hi, my name is Rachel Goodman and I live at one thirty-six Walker Road and I also graduated from the high school in two thousand and ten. I do not believe that we should be returning to in-person teaching. I don't work in education. I work adjecently in education, I guess. I edit textbooks for high school students and for college students. And I've seen the devastation of returning to in-person learning at the college level across the entire country. And it's killed our students. It's killed the students who read the books that I edit. But it's more personal than that. I have friends, fellow graduates of West Orange High School who are teachers all across New Jersey? Including in district, in addition to my mother, but? My friends who work across New Jersey in districts that have even less cases than Essex County? Less cases than West Orange. As recently as Monday, they were forced into quarantine because children received positive COVID results in class. And that's in districts where they're testing students and teachers, which I don't believe is the case here in West Orange. No, to my knowledge, no one has been tested before going back to in-person. And I want to address the trauma that that is going to cause for students. It's traumatic to live through pandemic and? Being a millennial student, I know quite a bit about experiencing trauma in schools. I remember Columbine and the introduction of school hooter drills, which Mr. Wax talked about. I remember witnessing the smoke from nine eleven and the way it changed our entire curriculum? And the way that I was taught about the world. I remember my eighth grade year in district when we had bomb threats pretty much every single week? And had to add evacuation drills because we were worried about being blown up in the school. I remember all of these events and they impacted the way that I felt safe in the classroom. How are students today going to feel safe if they assume that they are carrying a disease that could kill them? Their classmates, their teachers or their families? Oftentimes, they're multi-generational families in this district who all live in the same home. How are they supposed to learn if they're worried that they or the child next to them is the carrier? How are they going to be able to develop relationships, be able to retain information? How will they feel if someone in their classroom dies after coming into contact with them? After they know they've had COVID? And they survive and their friend doesn't, their teacher doesn't? Are you ready to handle the survivor's guilt these kids will carry? Warranted or not, because you forced them back into an in-person learning situation when it wasn't safe? Will you be able to look at those children, at their parents? At me if my parent, my only parent? Dies because she's at risk for COVID and isn't vaccinated and you put her back into the schools? How do you have a plan for that mass trauma and that mass guilt? When this is something that no one has lived through in a hundred years? Colleges aren't prepared and I don't believe the sister is prepared. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Julie Bookbinder. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen.
Hi, Julie Bookbinder, thirty-seven Collmore Circle. First, I'd like to thank Dr. Cascone and the board for your strength and leadership? This month and throughout this entire experience. I am an elementary school parent. I spoke at the last meeting and I remain? Supportive and thankful that the schools are going to at least try to reopen. The American Academy of Pediatrics has come out again this month to say that it is critical for children to get back to school. The CDC has issued pages upon pages? Of information for how to protect the staff. There have been study after study showing that there is really not that much evidence of school spread. The spread comes from outside. It's time that our community needs to reestablish trust in one another? And share the responsibility of being careful protecting our families? And protecting our students so that we can protect these teachers and staff that will be going back into the buildings. I have in front of me the sixty-five pages of the Roadback Guidebook that was issued? By Dr. Cascone and his team this month. There have been months of preparation, thousands of dollars of work. Other towns have made this work and it is time that we try. Schools are not going to be a frigid and impossible scary environment for children. Children are extremely adaptable. I have been impressed beyond belief by my elementary age children over this whole experience. We have all been living in an environment with masks for nine months. Children will be okay with that in the classroom. Is it going to be scary? Yes, I'm scared as a parent, but it's time to make the opportunity available? For people who are interested to be able to return their children to school. This is not a laziness factor for parents who need childcare? Or for frivolous socialization of gossiping? This is critical for the development of our children and we owe it to them to give it a chance.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Caroline Stoner. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please. Hi Caroline.
Hi, I'm here. Good evening. I'm Caroline Stoner, St. Cloud teacher. This is my thirtieth year teaching. First, I want to thank Dr. Cascone? And the board for all of the support they have given us? The kindness they've bestowed on us and the guidance throughout this very, very stressful time. When I thought about speaking tonight, my first thought was? I really have nothing new to say, nothing that anyone else hasn't said before. We all know we're in a pandemic with numbers soaring. We're all nervous about that. Why would we put our students, ourselves and all of our family members into harm's way? It's all been said, so? I'm coming tonight to this meeting with rather a personal story. And maybe I shouldn't get so personal, but I have nothing to lose because I am frightened. My daughter was diagnosed as a type one diabetic last year. It was really bad. And we almost lost her. For anyone who is not aware, type one is not about eating cookies and cakes and sweets. It's an autoimmune disease. So she's more vulnerable than others. And I know, I know. I'm not the only person in this situation where we have family members at home? Who are more susceptible to this deadly COVID virus? When I express my anxiety, many people just suggest I take a leave of absence. Unfortunately, I cannot afford to do that. I'm sure I'm speaking on behalf of many others? Who are maybe afraid to speak up for fear of being ridiculed on social media. We saw that happen last week. But I can no longer be afraid of that. We do want to go back to our kids? But we are scared. We are anxious. We do want to go back to our kids, but we are scared. We are anxious. We are nervous, and not only for ourselves, but for our families. We, as educators, are known for our empathy, our sympathy, and how we care for others, especially our students. We're not speaking up as a selfish act. We're speaking up because we are just that, caring individuals who are scared. We need the numbers to go down, and by putting us all back into the buildings, it only stands to reason the numbers are going to climb. And although we may be looking at just West Orange numbers, teachers travel from all over the state. I don't want to put myself or any of my family members, or colleagues for that matter, in a situation where I am the reason they get sick. I wouldn't be able to live with myself. And like I said earlier, last year, I almost lost my daughter to a disease I never knew could be so deadly. And I never want that fear again. We are so close to receiving the vaccine. Can we just please wait it out? Please consider waiting until we're all safe and can return with some peace of mind, content in knowing that we are not putting anyone in danger. Thank you for listening, and thank you again for all of your support.
Thank you. Next, we have Kevin Brady. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen. Kevin Brady, if you can follow the prompt on your screen. Oh, there we go.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Yes. Hi, my name's Kevin Brady, sixty Wallington Avenue. So I just wanted to comment quickly. Thanks, Dr. Cassone and the elected Board of Members. We are very excited to see West Orange begin to execute the plans that have been in place for months and capitalize on all the work that's done. I wanted to comment briefly on some of the mischaracterizations that are floating around. A lot of parents, at least the ones I know, don't have any enemies in this town. We want a safe return to classrooms, just like everyone else does. Everyone's level of comfort right now is different, and we understand that, and that should be respected no matter what direction it's headed. And yes, parents are gathering and discussing, discussing, and sometimes venting. And we know that teachers, staff members, and other members of the community have concerns and fears. And we need to discuss those and accommodate, make accommodations for those, absolutely. But we also need to make sure people are properly informed. There's not going to be any time in the near future where we're all safe. Even the vaccines are not a hundred percent effective. They do not yet have proven to stop spread. So a vaccinated person could possibly spread COVID nineteen to other people, and they're not approved for adolescents or children younger than twelve. Testing is currently happening for adolescents, so that means children twelve to seventeen may be able to get vaccinated in the year twenty-twenty-one, but possibly not. Children younger than twelve will be long after that. So to address some earlier comments, yes, a couple of us kept track of who called in during public comment in the last meeting and tallied up where people stand. That's not intimidation. We're not trying to intimidate anybody. It's just a fact and a summary of what public comment is. And local media is not really covering our Board of Ed meetings, and not everybody could attend. So some of us want to have information to use in our own discussions. Recently, Soma, South Orange Maplewood did a survey and had ninety-eight percent of parents respond and seventy percent opted for hybrid. This isn't a small but vocal minority. This is a majority. A majority of parents want their children, to some degree, back in person. And we know from classrooms across the country that there is some number of children greater than zero that can sit in each classroom safely. So I want to thank Dr. Cassone and the Board again. And I am very happy to see that we are moving forward. I know some people aren't happy with that. And I think we need to work together as a community to make sure that everybody is well informed and feels safer, and we need to address the concerns. Thanks. Have a good night.
Hey, thank you. Next, we have Julie Matts. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen.
Good evening. My name is Julie Matts, and I am a librarian at the high school. I have a few things to say. The first thing I would like to say, though, it is not a majority of the teachers that want to have children back in school. It is one hundred percent of the teachers who want to have children back in school safely. They want to be back in school, and it is breaking my heart tonight listening to the discourse and hearing the tremor in the voices of my colleagues, hearing their passion, hearing their concern, and also putting myself in the position of the policymakers. May not be known, but my background is I'm a high school, I'm a high school librarian. I've also been an elementary school teacher. I'm also a public policy analyst, and I understand clearly the difficulty that the Board has in making a decision that is based on such conflicting needs, but also at the base of it, really, the same thing. We all want the best for our children. Someday, possibly, West Orange will show up as a case study in a public policy program, but today it is happening, and it is unprecedented. The next point I'm going to make may seem trivial in comparison to that, but I was thinking of all our discussion about what it looks like in the classroom and also thinking about there are all, there are so many other districts where it's already happening. Well, what do those classrooms look like? So I called up my sister, who teaches in Ridgefield, Connecticut, teaches first grade, and I said, Amy, what does your classroom look like? And her classroom is socially distant, and all of her, all of the desks are surrounded with tall plexiglass dividers. My question, and I would absolutely love it to be answered specifically, is will plexiglass dividers be provided in the classrooms of our elementary schools? Elementary school teaching is a contact sport. I know this from experience. It is so hard not to touch. It is almost impossible. And so it will be as important for the teachers as it is for the students to have reminders that we need to be safe in our own space. I do not at all, I, well, I do. Let me change that. I so respect and admire the work that the Board and that you are doing, Dr. Cassone. And also, I do believe that through all of this, our community will come together. The overwhelming thing that I hear is that we all want the same thing. We want the best for our students. And I wish you well in your decision, and I hope that you will reconsider the hybrid model right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Sharon Ortiz. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Ortiz, Sixth Lowell Avenue, and a teacher at the high school. Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to speak. Many districts have taken the precaution to safeguard their students and staff by closing or remaining closed. This includes Orange, which we border, and Seton Hall, a school in a safer building with substantially less students and the means to do routine testing for students and staff. I have two questions. One, if Seton Hall has been advised to close for the next two weeks by the West Orange Board of Health due to high community numbers, why would we reopen during the same time period? Two, if it is the goal that community feels safe re-entering the buildings at the height of this pandemic, would we be able to invite the West Orange Board of Health and the district doctor to give the staff and community an update in an open forum? Finally, I am saddened and appalled at the treatment of my colleagues and myself by a few people in the community that I love and have always been proud to call home. While I have been a teacher in district for fifteen years, I, like many of my colleagues, at last count, over two hundred of us also live in West Orange. So my concerns are for our schools, as well as for the town that I too pay taxes in and have lived in for almost twenty years. I'm not sure of the intent of posting our names, bragging that lists were being kept, and playing bingo based on belittling our valid concerns and our desire to keep ourselves, student, and the community safe. We are the very same dedicated educators that willingly stayed overnight during snowmageddon to keep our students safe. We kept them in the building because it was the safest place to be in that moment, and now we are trying to keep them at home because that is the safest place for them to be in this moment. We have been advised repeatedly to take a chance and try. I am not a person afraid to try, as anyone that knows me can attest. But failure in this instant, despite our best effort, means that someone has become ill and possibly have died when it all could have been prevented. Is that something that anyone wants to live with? Stay safe, and I look forward to your responses. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jennifer Turullo. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen.
My name is Jennifer Turullo from Washington Elementary School. I first want to thank the Board of Education and Dr. Cassone for letting us speak tonight. I wasn't going to speak, but I felt that I had to. I have taught in this district for over twenty-six years. Upon graduating from college, I was offered many jobs, but took the one in West Orange because I was a student at St. Cloud, and my family has very strong ties to the town. My grandfather was Congressman Joseph Minish. He lived in West Orange, right across from St. Cloud, and served as a U.S. Congressman for twenty-six years. He taught me that sometimes hard decisions have to be made, but as long as they protect the people, it's the right decision to make. I will not be coming to school in, I will not be coming into school next week because I will be out on medical leave. Not something I would ever want to share in a public forum. But many of my colleagues have said to me that I was lucky because I was having surgery next week and not coming into school. That is something that should never be said. I feel like I shouldn't be speaking since I'm not coming in during the beginning of hybrid, but I had to because when people think you are lucky because you're having surgery and not teaching, that is fear. And we shouldn't be scared to teach. I'm speaking for all my peers who feel that they can't. We teach because we love it and love our students. And I hope that the elected officials will be like my grandfather, who represented this great town of West Orange for so many years in Congress, and protect my peers and my students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Carrie Finkst. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen. Carrie Finkst? You should have a prompt on your screen. Okay, Carrie, I'm going to come back to you. Michaela Bennett, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen.
Thank you. Sure, Michaela Bennett, Old Indian Road. Why are we on a Zoom meeting? A remote Board of Ed meeting if things are ready for a safe return. Undoubtedly, by now, many of you have seen the Seton Hall Prep memo to parents that the West Orange Board of Health mandated that they go fully remote due to an outbreak. They came back from the holidays eight days ago. Look at the data dashboard. The New Jersey data dashboard. School outbreaks have skyrocketed, specifically in the counties that returned to schools. Since the last Board of Education meeting seven days ago, one hundred and eighty-eight confirmed cases in this town. Thirty-one were children. Imagine, that's why we're fully remote. Imagine what those thirty-one children could cause if they're hybrid, or even if a few of them are hybrid. The whole state is currently orange on maps that lag by a week or two. Uncontrolled spread is occurring in this state, in this county, and in this town. Your principals won't sign off on building safety. Your educators want a vaccine first. What causes you to choose a reckless course? An anomaly. You're relying on an anomaly, an eight percent anomaly from a week that the mayor himself acknowledges the data was skewed because of testing availability. To justify returning, you're looking at an anomaly. Just look at the data dashboard. The places where there are outbreaks are precisely the places that went back into buildings or hybrid models. I left the meeting earlier tonight. I was disgusted by the hypocrisy of this board. Voters rid the Board of Ken Alper. You bring him back. Discussions about dress codes by a board member who violates it as she speaks. But I returned because of the teachers. They deserve a complete record, made in the event of a tragic outcome because of your disregard for science and intellectual honesty. With nothing but a one-week anomaly, you're going to ignore safety, reason, logic, and your prior course. It's wrong. It's reckless, and your rationalizing letter issued forty minutes before this meeting was filled with inconsistency. How can you, in good conscience, do what you know is wrong? Forget bingo games. You're playing Russian roulette, and it's wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we're going to try Carrie again. If you can follow the prompt on your screen. I believe I'm mispronouncing your last name. P.F.I.N.G.S.T. Finkst. Try one more time, Carrie, if you can follow the prompt that's on your screen right now. Okay, we will try one more time again. Tammy Cowley, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen.
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I actually wasn't going to do this. My kids actually told me not to.
Tammy, I'm sorry. Can we just have your name and address for the record?
Yeah, well, you have my name, and I'm not giving out my address because I know that there is issues with people in town, and I don't have any enemies, and I don't want any enemies. Okay, so I live in town, and I have seven kids. And I wasn't going to call in tonight, but I decided to after I heard Kim Buckley mention that there was a person who passed away who was fifty-four years old. Okay, that was my husband. So I'm gonna try to speak as clearly as I can, and I might have to take another three minutes, so you can then log me in as my husband's speaking. Sending teachers and kids back to school will bring a whole new set of problems to people's doorsteps and then their doors, and then to the grocery store, to the innocent person who has done and followed the guidelines or the toy aisle or the toy aisle at Walmart, and then the checkout line. This is an enemy you don't see coming. It doesn't matter your race or your wallet or the town you live in. And honestly, I'm going to add, it doesn't matter if Orange closed and Newark closed or Livingston closes. It doesn't matter. The virus, it doesn't have a border. It just goes. The virus is like a tornado. It comes down your street, and it rips off the roofs of some houses, and then it tears the siding off some of the other houses, and then it completely destroys the house, just one house, and that happened to be my house. We're, we oh, hold on a second. We're just behind what has happened in other countries, and we, and we have been consistently behind. And then our country, because we're a great country, we then exceed what happens in those other countries. People in this town and people everywhere need to understand, this is a public health issue. This isn't your family's issue. This isn't your house's issue. It's a public health issue. And your perfect life can easily be destroyed. You just might happen to be that one house that the tornado takes out. I'm scared. My kids aren't going back in those buildings. They're not going back. I already made that decision. Unfortunately, these teachers don't have a right to make that decision because people are demanding what they're demanding, and I get it. Everybody has a right to have their demands. When one comes down to a public health issue, you need to look at it in a different way. Yeah, it sucks. It sucks that kids don't have friends. It sucks that you can't get your nails done. It sucks you can't go play. Yeah, it sucks. It sucks that kids don't have friends. It sucks that you can't get your nails done. It sucks you can't go play bingo in an actual bingo hall. I couldn't have a funeral. My kids don't have a father. And I needed to call in because everyone's talking in a perspective of not knowing. So I'm not going to give my address because I don't want any nastiness, because I don't have any enemies, but I don't have my husband. I couldn't send my daughter to cheer practice the other day because all I could think of is, oh, my God, she goes to cheer practice? She does that? Yeah, it would be great for her to see her friends, great for her to see her coaches. Sure, that would be great, really good. But come the fall, will I actually be able to sit in the stands and see her cheer? I think people need to look inside. People need to understand that it's bigger than them. It's bigger than their six-year-old. It's bigger than packing a backpack. It's bigger than figuring out what reading level they're at, and that goes back to the November meeting that I listened to before my husband passed away. My husband, my husband was a smart man. So you can be on the bottom of the daily tally, be smart. Oh, my husband was smart. Be socially distant. We kept, we were socially distant because back in April, when my husband went to his job after 18 years of working there, they told him they eliminated his position, completely eliminated it. So he had no job. So what I'm saying to you is that you guys got to understand, it's a public health issue. And these teachers, they're not all my kids' teachers. But I fear for my teachers, all of them, every one of them in this town. And nobody should be able to say that they shouldn't be afraid. They should be afraid. They should be afraid of the person who walks their dog past their house. They should be afraid of the garbage man because we've all been convinced that the masks work. My husband wore a mask. My husband washed his hands so much so that they were dry and cracked. We did everything right. We did everything right, and he's not here. And I wasn't going to do this because now when I hang up the phone and I'm done, I've got a long night ahead of me because now I have to digest what I let everyone hear. But I feel like everyone's wants and everyone's needs is totally different, totally different than somebody who's actually experiencing what this virus can actually do. And I thank everyone for listening, and I'm sorry for sharing. But I had to because I've listened to so many of these calls that I feel like somebody's got to hear the other perspective. And I appreciate it, and I'm thankful that we have a wonderful superintendent. And I'm thankful for all the board members, and I am so thankful for my teachers. And I think that's enough.
Thank you, Ms. Cowley. Betsy Stevens, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
My name is Betsy Stevens. I'm at Beaumont Terrace. And I just want to first off, thank the brave woman who just spoke. And a lot has been said tonight. So I won't reiterate what everyone else has said. I would like to say that we're so close to having the vaccine rollout. I don't know why we can't wait until we're vaccinated and can go back safely. It's so close. Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie, we're going to try one more time. If you can follow the prompt on your screen.
Hi, can you hear me?
Ah, yes, thank you.
I am so sorry about earlier.
It's okay, it's okay.
My name is Carrie Finkst. I live at 13 Helen Avenue. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the board for being here. Thank you for all your support during this really difficult time that seems to never end. I want to offer my sincere condolences to the previous widow who just spoke. It was so moving. I didn't even really know what to say after that, actually. You know, I am against school opening until we are all vaccinated. We are just so close. It just seems, it seems a fool's errand really to open at this point until we're vaccinated, and we really are so close. And some people have brought up the point that, you know, what about people who aren't going to get vaccinated? Honestly, that's not my concern. I mean, that's their choice. I can't control what they do. But, you know, I mean, even in terms of my own self, I don't have a room to teach in. I teach in several different rooms. I will be switching classes several times a day, walking through a hallway where I have been told that there really is no return on air in the hallways. Yes, there is in the classrooms, but not in the hallways. So while many teachers have their own rooms, I don't, and so do so many other teachers. And the directive for us has been, when we're not teaching, where do we go? We were told to go to the LMC. Well, there are actually quite a lot of us who don't have rooms. And now there seems to be an issue where obviously we can't all be in the library at the same time. So now where will we go? We can't eat lunch. Where will we go for that? Someone said, oh, well, we could eat in our car. Seriously? I mean, this is a bit ridiculous. I think that we should wait, please, until we're all vaccinated so we can be with our students the way we want to be, be with our coworkers, and hopefully not have such a horrible experience as that poor woman who just spoke. I feel so badly. And, you know, this could be any one of us. She's absolutely right. Thank you so much for listening. Have a good night.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to make a final call for anyone who would like to speak. They can use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. I will not be making another last call after this. Rachel Keen, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, how are you? Rachel Keen, 22 Schmidt Road. So I just joined recently, so I didn't get to hear everybody speak tonight. You know, I just want to offer that this has been an extremely difficult time for everybody in this community and in the world. We are all going through this together. We've all lost family and friends to this virus. And many of us have been home and extremely careful since the beginning of this virus. Not seeing family or friends for months at a time, and not engaging in life the way that we did before. And I genuinely feel very sorry for everyone who called in. I am sorry I missed what you had to say, and I believe you when you say you're afraid. You know, I have to believe that you're being genuine. It's not my place to doubt anybody. And at the same time, it's not anyone's place to doubt parents when they say their kids are hurting. So I just want to say that I believe parents know what's best for their kids. I believe that even though I want to vaccinate my children, if someone doesn't want to, then they know what's best for their kids, for example. If you want your child to remain virtual, you know what's best for your family. And if a parent says that their child is hurting and going in for two half-days a week is going to make it better, then I believe them. And I don't question them, and I don't bully them on the internet. And I think that the bullying on the internet has become extremely ugly. But when I look at the people on my street who don't use Facebook and who all want their children to go to West Orange Public Schools for hybrid learning, they're young children who have played in the street with my son for four years. I believe them. And I know that they represent what this town really is. So I just want to read something to you. This is from the Academy of American Pediatrics. So since we have, I'm sure, discussed the science during this call. And I've heard a lot of elementary school parents call in supporting hybrid. I've heard a lot of special needs parents call in supporting hybrid. In the last call, I heard teachers from some of the older grade levels calling in, saying that they don't want to go in. But this is from AAP. "The school guidance details the important role schools play in children's educational, social, physical, and emotional development, as well as being a source of special services and nutrition. Without access to the support systems that schools provide, disparities among students who are Black, Hispanic, American Indian, and Alaskan Native and living in poverty will continue to widen. The guidance presents new research findings that schools have not been a significant driver of SARS-CoV-2 transmission in their communities when they take safety precautions." If I might finish, I'm sorry, I'm almost done. So again, schools are not a significant driver of transmission in communities when they take safety precautions. Transmission has been especially low among younger children. So let me ask you, do we believe the Academy of American Pediatrics? That's my question.
Okay, thank you.
That's it, thanks.
Okay, thanks. Nicole Ruffo, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Yes, hello, good evening. Nicole Ruffo for Overlook Avenue. First, I just have to take a moment to just offer my sadness and condolences for that mother who just shared of her loss of her husband and father of her seven children. I think that we all just need to send her our best wishes and also take our actions to show that we care about her loss. As a former teacher, I have to always stand on the side of the teachers. I know what it's like to be in a classroom. I know how easily things spread in a classroom. And I know how hard teachers work. My friend went back to a hybrid situation in September outside of Boston, and she had such severe anxiety in August, witnessing the online discourse in her community that she had to go on medication, and she had to disengage from any of the news or online discussions about the return to school. She has been hybrid since, and it has never gotten better. I'm sure she's gotten used to it, but many people in the history of bad things happening to the world have gotten used to awful things. That doesn't make it right. She is very stressed out, and luckily, she hasn't become sick. I just think about these teachers and what they're asking. They're asking for a vaccine that's available for them. This is what they're asking for, and these are our teachers who we count as some of the most valuable people in our children's lives. In honor of Martin Luther King's, you know, anniversary of his birthday this coming up week, this quote, I think, just speaks so much to what people are asking for. "An individual has not started living until he can rise above the narrow confines of his individualistic concerns to the broader concerns of all humanity." And during this awful pandemic, we have had to make so many sacrifices for the greater humanity. I just ask that the board and Dr. Castone truly think about what sacrifices we're willing to make in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, we have Nicole Doherty. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hi, Nicole Doherty, 7 Ronald Terrace. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. I know based on the letter that Dr. Castone released earlier in this evening, it seems that we're going to proceed with the hybrid process starting on the 25th. But I wanted to voice my concerns that this will not benefit the district. Not only does it put our teachers, faculty, students, and families at risk when vaccination is within reach for many, it will also dilute the education that our children are receiving. Teachers are rightfully frightened to return to school. As human beings, this will weigh on them even as they are doing their very best to teach our children. They will also be worrying about making sure children are distanced, not playing with or removing their masks, how bathroom breaks will occur, and other things regarding safety that they should not need to have to worry about. The actual experience for those in class, as well as home, will be diminished merely because a teacher cannot teach to two different groups at the same time. The children in class will still be on their Chromebooks. They will not be able to eat, have recess, or collaborate with their classmates the way they are used to doing in the classroom, which makes it unclear to me why there is such a push for in-person learning before it is safe to return. Further, the letter distributed today indicated that 3,900 children are slated to return to the buildings in the hybrid format, implying a demand for in-person instruction. A petition that has been in circulation for over a month has garnered just over 200 signatures, which does not seem to represent the claimed interest in returning, particularly since some who signed do not even have children in district. I know people have been vacationing, gone on ski trips, had their children attending indoor dance and other lessons, which increases the risk of spreading school. Recently, a parent suggested that kids would be upset to see their friends and not be able to interact, to which another parent commented, "Why can't the kids share a brief hug with each other?" It's these types of actions and thinking by the minority that will be dangerous to the majority. The town's positivity percentage is over 10% again, which I thought was the metric for evaluating reopening. I'm unclear what made that change, or why reopening was decided upon after one week of the metric being under 10%. Seton Hall Prep just closed for two weeks as mandated by the Town Board of Health, which seems contradictory to the public schools reopening now. The entire state is orange per NJ.gov's Cali Report, which the guidelines suggest those who are in remote learning stay remote. Now is not the time to reopen, and I urge you to reconsider doing so. Thank you.
Thank you. We actually had someone else raise their hand. Alexandra Mizrahi, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Thank you, Cookie.
Sure.
Alexandra Mizrahi, 35 Washington Avenue. As I said before, my kids are not going to school. But I just wanted, I wasn't even planning to talk to the person before. Sorry. I got emotional with the lady call. I just want to make sure that people understand. A school is made in equal parts by students, parents, teacher, staff, custodian, food service, and everyone who was orange. I hope that you guys wait with the same value, face value, of each one of those persons that I just said and make a one decision. It's important for us as a parent to know that every person who spoke tonight and has spoken from the beginning, their voice is heard and taken in consideration with the same value that just a little few who are pushing to get back. My family has to decide for health reason to don't be able to go back to school. That's not our choice. I have nothing else that I can put my kids at risk, and I need to protect myself to protect my family. At the same time, my only plea is for please understand that I just want everybody to be able to come back when they are safe so we soon can be all together safely. And lastly, best wishes to the teacher who's going to go for surgery. My condolence for the imaginable loss of my father, a husband, and a member of our community. I'm sorry, I got emotional, but it's a big loss. And I want you guys to understand that we don't do no good to bring teachers to a classroom when there are so much in panic. Because that is no good to no one for our kids, and for them, they are us. And we don't take care of them. We, as a parents, are not taking care of our kids because they are there for our kids. A school is extension of home. Please, again and again, please wait every voice of the staff with the same value of every student and every single parent. And let us be safe so we can be back together in healthy ways. Good night. Thank you, Cookie.
Thank you. And that is the end of public comment on our end, Ms. Trixgills.
Thank you so much, Ms. Groftisa, and...
And before we go into any responses, I too want to offer my condolences to the Cali family. I mean, there isn't, there aren't a lot of words to say to convey. My heartfelt sympathy, and I'm sure the board will express the same thing, but I just wanted to say that before we get to the responses. Dr. Kasko.
I mute off so Ms. Graffteza doesn't have to remind me. I would also like to stress my condolences. You know, I haven't had an opportunity to meet all the, all the families in town, but the Cali is, the Cali family is a family with whom I'm acquainted. I've had the, the opportunity to meet Ms. Cali and, and and her family, and so I appreciate her kind words and, and to express my sincere condolences. You know, it's, it's so hard to, to respond in this, in this format. It's surreal, you know, not having the opportunity to see people face to face, to connect interpersonally. And, and the longer we kinda, we kinda operate within this modality, it, it actually ironically, paradoxically, doesn't get easier. My estimation, it gets, it gets harder. And I know one of the, the comments that was made was relative to, you know, the board meeting and the fact that we're doing it in this format. And, and we have virtual format, and we, we have more recently had conversations about when we want to transition back to in-person meetings. And, you know, and, and the reason why we've held off in doing that is that we're, we're permitted to do so. But the occupancy of the space where we would do it, which would be in the high school auditorium, and would, would be limited, somewhat limited. And we, we also know that at this time, these virtual meetings do serve a certain utility because it enables a lot of people to attend. And, and there are topics of high interest and a lot of folks who wish to weigh in and who wouldn't necessarily feel comfortable coming in person to the meeting. So there, there remains kind of an ongoing utility for us to do them virtually, though we certainly could host them in person. And, and, and I would feel perfectly safe doing it in person, provided we had the proper protocols in place. But it is very difficult, you know, particularly at, you know, at the end of a, a very long day. I'm always very deliberate in, in, in the words that I choose, you know, particularly in public. And, and obviously with such, such charged discussions and, and emotions and strong viewpoints, one needs to be extremely prudent and cautious in the way that one speaks. I, I can tell you that, you know, I, throughout my career as an administrator, I've always been, the feedback I've always received from my stakeholders has always been of, you know, a sensing, thinking, feeling administrator that, you know, that, that looks out for the staff and respects the staff. And, and I think the staff that have gotten an opportunity to meet me and know me would, would, would concur with that. You know, I, I think it's, you know, it, it's tough because, you know, the conversation, it, it's sort of contextualized, contextualized in that like West Orange is sort of a, an isolated universe in of itself. And, and I think to ignore the larger context outside of West Orange, I think the context outside of West Orange needs to be acknowledged, namely that I think the, the commentary and the feedback that's been provided, I, I wonder the extent to which the governor, you know, and I, and I don't say this in any disrespect to our governor, but, you know, has the governor received, you know, this kind of heartfelt, emotional feedback? And if so, you know, why hasn't, why hasn't the governor's expectations? Or why, why have, why has the public education system been sent down this path? I think these are all questions that are worthy to ask of our overseeing authorities, which have essentially put us down this path for which we've been preparing for the last six months. I think also in the larger context is, and I've, I've noted it a number of times, is, you know, if you look nationwide, over sixty some odd percent of schools are offering some form of onsite instruction. And, and in the state of New Jersey, hundreds and hundreds of schools, of school districts are, are offering it. And so I just think that just as in our teachers' minds, there exists a disconnect of why if it's not safe to do X or we being asked to do Y, I think we have to recognize the disconnect that exists in some of our constituents' minds as to, well, why is it that, 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 that children in that community are able to be educated onsite and ours aren't? And, and I would just like to address the, you know, the, the point about the 3,900 parents. And, and I'd also just like to reiterate, and I mentioned it in my video on social media this weekend, and not that everybody sees that, but that I, I, I don't put, I don't put fake information in my correspondence. That I don't, I don't put misinformation or disinformation in my correspondences because I can't afford it. Not only would I not do that, because I'm not a person that does that, but I, you know, I can't afford to do that because I know and I should be held accountable for the information that I put in my correspondences. So that 3,900 number, it's actually more in the neighborhood of about 300, I think it's 3,826, but it's somewhere in that neighborhood. Those are all students who are signed up for hybrid. That comes directly from our, our hybrid versus remote survey. So we have approximately 56% of our students whose parents have indicated that they would like them in for hybrid instruction. I just thought that that would, that was worth, worth mentioning. And, and, you know, there, there have been a number of questions and, and I, I want to try and avoid some of the, you know, the larger kind of philosophical rhetorical questions and discussion because I really would ask the communities, you know, understanding and patience to allow myself and allow the board to have an opportunity to just kind of consider and digest some of the feedback that's been provided. But there, there were some, some concrete questions that were asked that I, you know, to which I would like to respond. You know, the, in terms of, we, we've really, when, when, when we, the, 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 the way we have planned for the return of our teachers and the accommodations which we have been afforded, we've really tried to extend as many accommodations to our teachers as possible. I mean, starting with the conservative approach to our schools, you know, as it relates to universal masking. Now, I will tell you that when we first started planning for the return, universal masking, it's not required. And when I first went down this road, it wasn't even my thought that we would require all students to wear masks all the time, particularly since they were going to be socially distanced. But we soon, soon understood in listening to our teachers and understanding that it would, you know, would make them and make many parents and students feel more comfortable, we went to universal masking while maintaining the maximal, maximum social distance in the classroom. So in all of our planning and, 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 and conversations with teachers, you know, we've listened and, and we've, we've taken as conservative approach as possible. We're allowing our teachers to be dismissed after their student, you know, their, their student contact time. They'll be allowed to take their lunch and then reconvene any, any of their afternoon responsibilities from their home setting. Not only will that remove them from the buildings a, as early as possible, it'll provide our buildings and ground staff additional time to clean and sanitize our buildings. And it'll, it'll enable our teachers to, and it'll, and will relieve some of, of the childcare responsibilities that our teachers may have. It's within the contractual obligations, but it allows them and affords them those responsibilities. I'm sorry, those accommodations. Today, our Director of Personnel emailed staff that we're not taking a hard line as far as quarantining goes. In other words, if, you know, if you're quarantined, now as of December 31st, the federal, the federal guideline sunset. It, it, it used to be that if you were quarantined due to exposure to COVID or having COVID, you were afforded 10, 10, 10 COVID, 10 COVID days, if you will. That sunset as of December 31st. And there are a lot of districts that are requiring staff members to actually use their own sick time for those days. We are affording teachers the accommodation, you know, to continue to instruct virtually from home if they are able to do that. Obviously, if they're unwell and they're not able to do that, then obviously they would take a sick day like they would any other day. But provided that they're just quarantined because they were exposed, but they're not positive, but they're just on quarantine, because that's in the best interest of everyone. It's in their best interest. They don't need to take their, their contractual sick days. And we're able to actually have the certificated teacher continue to deliver virtual instruction. You know, in terms of the, the repeated quarantines, right. I mean, we, you know, we know, and, and having observed what's happened in other districts, that if we open, yes, the quarantines are going to happen, classes may be closed, schools may be closed. And certainly if we start to see that those closures become, become so repeated and so disruptive that it, it, it's really the law of diminishing returns. Just as I and the board made difficult decisions early on, we'll make the difficult decisions again that are in the best interest of the overall operations of the district. And along those lines, I'd like to just speak to the example of Seton Hall. Because I think that in, in my conversations with the local Department of Health, you know, my, you know, my understanding is that there's a little lack of clarity on that. Seton Hall closed per DOH guidelines, state DOH guidelines, because they had multiple cases in separate cohorts. And so just like when we closed Washington School down before we were even open, because we had two staff members in that building that were in two separate cohorts, if you will. One was in the, 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 the Community House program, and one was one of our staff members in the building. That school is closed for two weeks. It was a misrepresentation, an unfortunate misrepresentation that, that that was due to community spread. That was due to multiple cases within cohorts. And yes, this was precisely the reason why we didn't, why we delayed any, any of our plans for bringing anybody in into January 19th to ensure that any kind of contact that people had over the course of the holidays had an opportunity to play out. And that is likely why we may be seeing a slight uptick in cases, you know, in, in following, in following the holidays. You know, as far as, you know, and, and we understand that, you know, that when, when students and staff come in, in this idea of panic attacks and, and just as our, our counseling staff have been there for students online, you know, our counseling staff will be there to, to assist students. I will tell you that in those early days, those initial days in school, the emphasis is going to be placed squarely on helping kids become comfortable and focused on their social motion wellbeing, more so than it's going to be on the coverage of content. But I, I would just like to, to, to speak to something, and, and I'd like to speak, and we talk about voices that are not being heard and, and, and the flip side of a coin. And I, and I mentioned this in, in my letter tonight, and, you know, I'd just like to address the fact that, you know, that, that letter was posted before the meeting, that letter was published several hours before the meeting. And I did think it was important prior to this meeting, just as I had done with the staff today, that I put out a notification to the community on kind of where I and the board stand at this time. But I would like to reiterate that the, that the, 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 the psychological impact on our stu, on some of our students for having been home and continuing to be home and isolated is real. It's real. And, and I'm not, and I'm not being hyperbolic when I tell you that I do receive between three and four notifications each week of students who are indicating that they're, 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 they want to self-harm. They want, they want to do harm to themselves. Now, as I said in the letter, you know, I, I can't say scientifically, I'm not a, I'm not a psychologist. And I can't say, you know, you know, definitively that that's a result of having been isolated at home. But I think we can hypothesize that that isolation that's caused by kids being home is a cause in that. So, so, you know, there, there is that, that side of, of things as well. And again, I would hearken back to that, you know, that 3,900 parents. You know, I, I, I hold a monthly Parent Advisory Council meeting. I have it represented from each of the schools. You know, and, and I think it represents a pretty good cross-section of the community. And obviously, there's some parents on, on, you know, on the committee who feel very strongly about onsite instruction and might even vocalize that publicly. We have parents on the call who are virtual and have no intention of sending their kids to school. And then we have what I would argue is kind of the middle, and the majority of parents who, who are very reasonable. And not that the others weren't, but that are saying, you know, we just, we just really hope that we can get back to school. Like, we, we just really feel like we, you know, so they're not, they're not extremely vocal about it. They're not posting on Facebook about it. But as Mrs. Keen mentioned, they, it's what they, what they genuinely, they genuinely want for their, for their kids. You know, the, the question was asked of what would the positivity rate have to be to oblige remote? Because even under the high-risk category, the COVID-19 risk matrix does not oblige or mandate remote learning. It would be 20% would have to be the positivity rate. And, and I would just would like to talk a little bit to, to the data. And, and Ms. Graffteza, would you, would you post that first, that first graphic I sent you? So this is, you know, this is a, the, the, the weekly situational awareness report that I get from, from the county office. And this is the situational awareness of, report from November of our county with the designations of, of the various townships. And you can see at that time, the county was not doing well. And in particular, West Orange was, was one of the towns that was doing particularly not well. And, and, you know, you'll notice the date 11/10 was right around the time that we decided to postpone the implementation of our hybrid model. And, and as I mentioned in my letter, you know, we were advised to postpone our hybrid model primarily by the district physician, though that decision was ultimately supported by the Department of Health. And, and the reason for that was, was that we were seeing at that time an uptick. And, and if you look at this, you know, the CDC data and the local State Department of Health data, you'll see that, that the summer, September, up to about mid-October, the cases were relatively low. And we saw this uptick happen towards the end of October and early November. And the question was, where is this trajectory going to go? Is it going to, is it, it's up and it's going to remain relatively flat? Or is this thing just going to, going to keep escalating up? And are we going to get back to the kind of daily cases locally that we saw back in March and April? And, and the reality of it is, is, and I, and I, I review these situational reports not only from the county, but also from the township on a weekly basis. And, and I'm not sure where, you know, the, the 20% increase, although I, I, I would be interested in, in, if Mr. Leach would share his spreadsheet with me. I'm not sure where that 20% increase comes from November to now. Because when I look at those, those weekly cumulative cases, you know, and I cited the number in my presentation last week, the, the weekly numbers, the week of November 10th were, were 12, were, were, were 12 higher than they, than they were the week of January. And, and what I will tell you as in looking at them is, is they fluctuate. I just got a situational report from local OEM and it was 110. So they've, they've, they, they ramped up to about 100 and they've fluctuated back and forth. As I mentioned in my letter, they've ebbed and flowed. At times, they've been below 100. At times, they've been above 100, but they basically stayed around that, meaning that the trajectory did not continue to go up exponentially. It's remained relatively constant. Now, if you look at the situational awareness report that I received from the county today, Ms. Graffteza, this is what we see from the county. Now, I, I know that this must appear to be a significant disconnect from some of the, you know, some of the data and some of the assertions that are being made. But, but this is nonetheless what is coming to me from the county. And, and it actually, it, it actually corroborates what we're seeing from positivity rates. Now, someone that spoke mentioned that, you know, our positivity rate is back over 10%. Now, you know, we, we've yet to get the official number from the town. I did ask anecdotally today if it were to be calculated, say today, what it would be. And I got that it would be around 9%, but obviously, we're going to be looking at that positivity rate. I think it's also important to realize is that, you know, if we talk about, you know, you know, waiting until it's safe, waiting until the vaccines, then, 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 then basically what this board would be saying is that we're not opening this year. And in fact, maybe we're not opening next year either. Because what I understand about this vaccine, you know, from what, you know, from what I've been told is that this is not like polio or measles or mumps where you get the vaccine once and you're done. In fact, you have to get it twice and you're still not done. From what I understand, that this is a, this is an annual seasonal vaccine that you would need to receive, not unlike the flu. So, you know, COVID is here to stay. And if we're talking about that we have to have global vaccination of every person that's coming into our buildings in order to feel safe, then, then we have a real, we have a real issue long-term in terms of how we're going to manage this in schools. And I, I, you know, and that's a bigger conversation today, but I think it's worth, I think it's worth noting. You know, I, I think that, you know, one of the other questions that would ask, there are a couple of the things here that, that jumped out. I mean, Ms. Trixgales is always good at reminding me if I've forgotten anything. So I'd, and any board members, I'd ask them to, they feel I've, I've overlooked anything. There was something mentioned about, Mrs. Bennett mentioned the idea of principals not signing off on the safety of their buildings. You know, you know, I'd like to just kind of clarify internally, kind of what, what I think she may have been alluding to was that, yes, the administrators association. Reached out to me and was, was, you know, sort of asking for, for, for the, the work that we've done. To be, really to be clarified and to ensure that we had some sort of a transparent artifact or evidence of each space. And so we've been working on that this week. Our, our HVAC specialists have been going around, we've been posting and will post checklists on all spaces. That will confirm that all those spaces have meet five criteria. Blowers are working, bipolar needle point is working, dampers open, filter's been replaced, heat is functioning. So that was great feedback from our administrators association. It actually took our thinking and our planning in a really good direction. And I think in the end is going to, is going to help a lot of staff members feel a lot more comfortable. You know, we, we are not going the route of, of universally in the schools with Plexiglas dividers. And, and that's, you know, and that's something that we, we've talked about. You know, many of the schools that are going with Plexiglas dividers are not, are not going for the maximum distance of, of six feet. Most, many schools that are going with Plexiglas dividers are going with three or four feet. So that they can have more students in the classroom at any given time. And, and therefore they have the Plexiglas dividers. We're going, we're erring on the side of maximum social distance and not going with dividers. Because, you know, this is to lend to as much normalcy as possible in the classroom. And I think there's just something visually and, and about having students encased in these Plexiglas dividers. Which makes an unusual experience even more unusual. That being said, in, in our autistic classrooms and our cell-contained classrooms, for our child study team members when they're doing, or therapists when they're doing testing. We do have those when close proximity is, is, is more necessary. I, I thought the suggestion about having another kind of medical public health town hall was a good one. I've made note of that. And I am going to kind of think about who we might want to have come to that and see if we can possibly put that together for next week. Just going back to this idea of the 19th, so, and this idea of, you know, having to get ourselves to a, to an intermediate point. To be able to even feasibly open. Now, I know the, you know, the ask is that we don't open. But that's never really been what, what our MO has been. I mean, our MO is, has been since the onset of this is that, you know, we, we developed a plan for hybrid. We've been planning to do that. It's what we've communicated to the county, it's what we communicate to the state, it's what the boards approved, it's what we've communicated to our constituents. So that, that's always been what our, what our goal is, it's what we've been asked to do. And so by bringing our staff in, which I would argue, you know, with, with essentially staff members in single occupancy spaces. With all of our protocol in place, is a, a safe environment, very safe environment. It enables us to do that soft opening while simultaneously evaluating the ongoing, the ongoing positivity rate and the ongoing cases. If we never get our staff in, we can't open because we have to understand who of our staff can come in and who can't. If we never get to that point, then we can't, we can't flip and go hybrid. And if that is our goal, which unless the board tells me otherwise, and unless we tell our state and county authorities otherwise, that has always been our goal. It's always been our plan for, for reopening. And, and I guess, you know, just one other thing I, I'd like to mention is, is, you know, I looked at the mayor's. Report of the 25 cases, and I know there were a few after that, but when I looked at the ages of those 25 cases. I didn't see one of those 25 cases that was actually a school age child. The old, the oldest, the youngest person I saw in those 25 cases that I saw listed more recently was 21. So, you know, I, I think it's important, you know, that we, you know, that when we, we, we report data, that we're reporting it in a, in an accurate and balanced, and balanced manner. And finally, I would just say, and I mentioned this, you know, and I just, I just like to, you know, because I, I can imagine that for our, our bus drivers, our, our, our custodians, our maintenance people. Our central office staff or building principals or administrative assistants, some launch aids that have been athletic coaches. You know, I, I imagine, you know, they, I don't know how they're feeling right now because they, you know, they, they're all, they're all staff members. Who, who have been in and who have been working and, and, and by whose efforts and labors, what, what you see happening on a daily basis. Has enabled to happen. I mean, and, and, you know, I, I mentioned that only because our, our safety record. You know, with all these staff members in has been very good. And, and, you know, I would, I would suggest that, you know, you know, that, that's important to remember when we consider about onboarding our other staff members. Listen, I, you know, this is, this is a, you can't, you, you couldn't script up a more difficult, a more difficult. You know, situation for, for people to be in. But, you know, I've, I've, I've taken a lot of time and care in communicating to the staff and communicating to the community. You know, I'm, I'm dismayed that, you know, that the communication I put out tonight was, was perceived to be, you know, contradictory or. Or disingenuous or ill conceived, certainly was not my intention. You know, but, you know, I can tell you that just as we have all along. I am basing the decision to the best of my ability on the data and the information that I'm getting directly from our local, our, our local experts. And just as that, you know, the data with which I was provided in November. Was to the chagrin of the people that wanted me to have the kids in school because it resulted in us not being in school. You know, the data I have now is, is indicating that it is, that it's, it's, it's time to give it a try. While at the same time evaluating it. And I, you know, I, I don't use data conveniently. I, 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 I look at it objectively to try and chart a course forward. But suffice to say, there's been some, some very heartfelt. You know, persuasive, emotional pleas given tonight. And, and, and I know that your board is, is a very thoughtful and considerate board. As I am as the superintendent and, and we will certainly consider it and have conversations about what we've heard tonight. So was there anything, any questions you felt that I might have missed, Ms. Trick scales?
That was very thorough, Dr. Kascun, very thorough. I, I went through the checklist and you, you got them all, you got them all. I, I just want to give my fellow board members an opportunity to make a closing remark. So, Mrs. Huerta, anything?
Always the first, I guess. I was trying to gather my thoughts while everyone was talking and, you know, as Dr. Kascun says, you know. It, it is a very difficult situation to be in. In my house, we are very divided. My husband is high risk and he's been, we've been very careful since the beginning of the pandemic. My four children, two of whom are in the schools. My son wasn't the best of students in regular learning. And with virtual learning, it's just been really hard for him. Emotionally, it's been a nightmare, let alone just trying to get him to get on the classes. I get emails and calls every day. And my daughter is slowly slipping into that same pattern. They're just very tired. As a matter of fact, today, before the, the meeting, we actually had another emotional, you know, episode at home. It's just a difficult situation and I empathize with all the families who want their children back in school. You know, nobody, I want my kids back in school as well, but my husband and I haven't even decided if we're going to actually do the hybrid or. Pull the, the children out of the, and, and, and stay into the virtual. And to be quite honest, maybe even just withdraw him from the district. It's been a very difficult talk with him in particular because he's, it's just an emotional disaster for him. I did want to send my condolences to the widowed family. I, I, I've lost many family members from the beginning of the pandemic. And we have very recently, and so I know a lot of families are calling demanding to be open. And many of our families are really engaged, especially the ones that are attending the board meetings and are with us until two in the morning. But there's a lot of families that are not on these calls. They're not as engaged, they're not as involved. And they will follow what the board and what the schools do. So if the schools are open, they will come. And so I just want to make people aware of that as well. Because although many people have been taking the precautions and have been very careful in order to ensure a safe reopening. Just to also be aware that there's other families who have not been able to be as safe as, you know, others have been. And just, this is something that my husband, you know, in our own household, we go back and forth with over and over. And it's just kind of like dragging in circles. And, you know, I see the, the side of both coins, right? I'm out here, actually last week, our first Board of Ed meeting, this is the first group of people I've been in the same room with and had no mask on. And I was actually really terrified, to be honest. But I had to have, you know, confidence and, and trust the people in the room with me that they're also being safe. And it is a scary thing, but it gets a, it gets a bit easier. Once you start getting into the groove of things and, you know, Dr. Kascun is a very effective leader. And I, and, you know, I trust his judgment and the goal has always been to open. And I think if, you know, he, I have full confidence that if he feels that we can attempt at least to open. Then I think that that's the proper course to take. I want to wish Ms. Tavolo a speedy recovery. She was actually my son's teacher, so she, she knows very well how, how he is academically and also emotionally. That's all. Thank you everyone for attending and staying on with us.
Thank you. Very insightful comments. Thank you, thank you. Ms. Merklinger?
Sure, so I just want to thank everyone again for, for calling in tonight and sharing their thoughts. You know, they do not fall on deaf ears and certainly everyone's. Views and thoughts and perspectives are definitely taken into consideration and it's definitely not an easy decision to make. You know, I'm married to a teacher who is going to hybrid next week. Similar to Ms. Huerta, in my household, you know, my husband was one of the folks that stayed inside the house, did not leave it for 32 something days. He kept track where I was out and I was going, you know, for runs and shopping and so on and so forth, coaching and everything. So, and our son plays sports. So, you know, so kind of different perspectives and, and totally understand, you know, he's ready to go back in. He feels safer now, knowing the precautions that are being put into place. So, you know, I would say that, you know, it's, well, I, I certainly understand. I think we have to, in some cases, maybe just, you know, take the leap of faith, go into it with a positive mindset. That's always been my perspective is going into everything with a positive mindset. And so I just ask everyone, you know, respect each other's wishes and respect each other's opinions as we navigate through this. This is something we've never, any of us have ever really dealt with. So, I would just say to keep that, you know, keep that in mind. Definitely want to extend my condolences again to the Cali family. You guys are always with us, especially since we had all of your children. I've coached your daughters and, and so certainly, you know, you're always with us and thought. And then I just wanted to say, you know, really looking forward to getting some rest this weekend. And I hope everyone gets some time to collect their thoughts and, and prepare for next week. And for those families that are excited for hybrid, I'm very happy for you. And I hope that it does, you know, I expect it will go very well with Dr. C at the helm here. And just everyone that I would hope just continue to be, you know, the great community that we are and to show that West Orange pride. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Merklinger, again. So many relevant and touching points. Ms. Tunneycliff?
Thank you. I wanted to say to Mrs. Cali, our most sincere consolences on the loss of your husband. I can't imagine how difficult that is for you. And I thank you for your candor and for speaking out today. I know that that could not have been easy. I also wanted to note that since June, the board has probably been meeting in central office. So we are together, we are here without masks, six feet apart as best we can. And we have been doing this since June. And I agree, I have, I have asthma and quite severe cases of it. And I was really afraid to come in and to do this. And, you know, my husband thought I was crazy and thought, you know. We had been telling our kids, we're not going anywhere, we're not seeing anyone, we're not doing anything, you know, because it's, you know, it could be a life threatening situation for me. But I worked through that fear and I came in and, and we've been, you know. Knock on wood, healthy and everybody's practiced good safety here. We wear our masks when we come in, once we're seated, we can take them off. We put them on as we leave. You know, it's a different set of protocols that we have to get used to. And, and I believe in what we're doing, I believe in the path that we've created. And, and I know it's difficult because I have days where I go back and forth. And I think, you know, I hope we're doing the right thing and I want to make sure because I, I feel for both sides. I can, I can see it both ways, you know, I, I understand the fear because I've been there. Of the people who don't want to come in, our, our staff and our faculty. And I understand that and I sympathize with it. And I understand the families that have children that are really suffering at home. And, and I can understand that too. And it's really, you know, none of us take this lightly and this decision lightly. And we constantly look at the numbers, we, you know, talk to experts. You know, we're trying to do the best we can and make the best decisions on behalf of the almost 7,000 children in this district. And we have a wide variety of. You know, having a diverse community also means you have a wide variety of responses to this type of, of crisis. And, you know, it, it is difficult. And we hope that we're, you know, we, we want to make the right decision for everybody. And part of that is making sure that those children who really need to be in school can come into school and to get what they need. And that's the one piece that we're missing right now. And, you know, I trust that we've done the work in our facilities, we've worked really hard, we've got a good plan. You know, and I, I trust Dr. Kascun's leadership on this. So, thank you so much and thanks for hanging in there with us tonight. Ms. Trick scales, I'm done.
Thank you, Vice President Tunneycliff, and Mr. Rothstein?
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm so grateful to my colleagues on the board for speaking so eloquently, which relieves a little bit of pressure for me to be able to do so right now. The thing they, two, just two big picture thoughts that strike me. One is how completely overwhelming COVID is for all of us. Overwhelming to the point that it's, it's difficult sometimes to see a path forward that feels 100% like the right path forward. And, and I've found that sometimes what helps me when I'm seeing friends and, and family and neighbors who. Sometimes I think we have so much in common with, who approach it so differently than I do. Or who I thought I had nothing in common with, and yet we find a lot of commonalities in, in the ways that we're struggling with how to move forward here. It's just helped to be forgiving and to just try to understand that there's. There's a lot of complexity and a lot of different ways to see this and a lot of paths forward. And I don't, I don't feel that I own 100% the understanding of what the right way to move is. We do the best that we can with the information we have. We try to be as well informed as we can and to open our hearts as much as we can and then make the right decisions. The second thought, the, the nicest moments for me tonight in hearing the, the comments. And this has really been across several meetings, but hearing comments is hearing and. this has really been across several meetings, but hearing comments is hearing, hearing from speakers who assume the best about people who they disagree with. That just really touches me and it feels like that's the spirit that's going to help us pull together and make this work and make this possible. And so my best wishes are with all of us. I, I believe that we can do this and we can do this safely. And, and I'm just going to keep thinking positive and saying my prayers for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rothstein. And as you said, each of us has spoken so eloquently this evening, so there isn't a whole lot left to say, except that we care about each and every one of you. We really, really do. And, and we listen. We're very compassionate people. I think running for the Board of Ed says a lot about who we are. We put in a lot of hours to work with Dr. Cascone to help solve a lot of problems. We try to be potential problem solvers. We, we don't always want to be reactive, we want to be proactive. And we have worked, the staff, Dr. Cascone, his administrative staff, our maintenance staff, custodial staff, our food service, everyone has worked diligently over these last several months to get it right. And there's no guarantee that it's right, but our hearts are in the right place. We, we love our teachers, we love our staff. We truly care about you and we care about all of our students. This is tough, this is tough. Not one of us here can tell you that we don't lose sleep over this. And as Dr. Cascone said, we're going to talk, look at the metrics, all of that is very, very important. I want to thank everyone who, who came tonight. We still have 138 people on. That's just testimony to how important this is and how much you care. Our next meeting is on January 25th at 7:30. As was mentioned earlier, we are here together. We haven't said that earlier. But we are here together safely. We want to have meetings in public, but we won't be able to do it virtually and to be able to have the conversations that we have with the number of people on the meetings. We, we have not figured out how to do that effectively. So in the meeting, we would be there socially distanced with our masks on and, and the jury's not out. We're still trying to figure out how to do that. We want to do it. We, we want to be in person, we want to see you, we want you to see us. But until we can figure that out, we'll be continuing, at least through January 25th. And so again, I thank all of you for being here tonight. As Mr. Rothstein said, stay safe, best wishes. And I guess we need a motion to adjourn?
I'll motion.
Okay, Ms. Merklinger and-
I'll second.
Ms. Tunneycliff. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Have a good night, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you. This is to inform everyone when I end the meeting, it will end for those both on and off screen and no other business will be conducted. Have a great night, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grafftisa.
Thanks. Have a good night, guys.